Welcome everybody. Welcome to tonight's Ordinary Council meeting. My name is Lucinda Congrove and I am the Mayor of Brimbank City Council. I declare this meeting open at 7pm. In the unlikely event of an emergency, please follow the directions of the council officers and the emergency procedures which are located on the wall near the door. I'd like to note that I've given approval for the journalists from the Star Weekly and for Channel 31 to audio and video record this evening in this meeting. I've also given permission to members of the Greek community to record the condolence portion of this meeting. Members of the gallery are not intended to be recorded, but please notify a council officer in the event you have any concerns. Can I please everybody to ask everybody to stand if you're able for the acknowledgement of country? On behalf of Brimbank City Council, I would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of this land, the Warrenjiri people, and pay our respects to elders, past and present. Thank you. You may be seated. Councillors, please remain standing for the council commitment. As a council, we will act in the best interests of the Brimbank community and consider the immediate and long-term impacts of our decisions. We will make these decisions fairly and without bias. We will uphold all of our obligations under the laws of Victoria and council's local laws and will act in accordance with our code of conduct. Thank you, councillors. Please be seated. Okay, so we're up to item three on the agenda, which is apologies and leave of absence. There are no apologies this evening, however, we have a recommendation in relation to approving a leave of absence. Councillors, is there a motion for this leave of absence? Thank you, Council Juditer Chair. Is there a second for that item? councillor Tarkos? Thank you. And I will put that item to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're now moving on to item number four, which is disclosure of the conflicts of interest. Councillors, are there any conflicts of interest to declare this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I will be declaring an indirect interest at item 12.11.
Thank you, Council Juditer Chair. Councillors, any other conflicts of interest to declare this evening? No? Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to item number five, which is designation of items as confidential. There are three items to be designated as confidential this evening. May I have a mover of a motion to designate these items as confidential?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council Juditer Chair. Is there a second? Councillor David? Thank you. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you. Okay, we're now moving on to item number six, which is confirmation of minutes of previous meetings. May I have a mover of a motion to confirm the minutes of the previous council meeting? Councillor Bork?
I move the motion as is.
Thank you, councillor Bork. Is there a second? Councillor Papafoudeo? All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're now moving on to item number seven, which is condolences. And unfortunately, there are four items of condolence this evening. The first item is number 7.1, which is condolences for the Democratic Socialist Republic of Sri Lanka. Now, I think it would be more than appropriate for council to extend its condolences to the Democratic Socialist Republic of Sri Lanka for the recent attacks on its citizens. So is there a mover of a motion to of condolence for the Democratic Socialist Republic of Sri Lanka? Councillor Allen?
Thank you. I'd like to move the motion that council writes to the High Commissioner of the Democratic Socialist Republic of Sri Lanka, extending its condolences for the recent attacks on its citizens and offering the city of Brimbank support and solidarity for the months ahead.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Is there a second for that motion? Councillor Tarkos? Thank you. Councillor Allen, would you like to speak to that motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council extends its heartfelt condolences to the people of Sri Lanka on the vicious terrorist attack carried out on the churches and hotels, which killed almost 300 people and left hundreds more injured on Easter Sunday. We strongly condemn these bombings. In light of the New Zealand massacre, I personally feel great sadness at these heinous attacks that targeted innocent people yet again. The attacks were appalling and our deepest sympathies go out to all those who were affected by the violence. The victims included Sri Lankans as well as visitors from other countries. Many victims were Christian worshippers attending Easter mass. Others were just going about their daily lives. Among the dead were two Australians, a mother and her young child. We extend our condolences to their family in this time of great loss. Our sympathies also go out to our community members of Sri Lankan heritage who would have experienced a great shock at the bombings and many who may have even lost loved ones in Sri Lanka. In closing, I'd like to reiterate that the Brimbank City Council strongly condemns all acts of terrorism and all forms of violent extremism. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Would the second like to speak? Councillor Tarkos?
Just to endorse what councillor Daniel Allen said, this is a really senseless act of violence against innocent civilians. It must be condemned. Many of the victims were, as councillor Daniel Allen said, worshipping or spending the holiday weekend in this beautiful country. We stand by the country in its efforts to preserve peace, stability and rebuild and the people affected both in Sri Lanka and abroad. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tarkos. Councillors, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Councillor Hiddich?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I support what councillor Allen and councillor Tarkos have said before me. My point tonight is to say that we have a very large Sri Lankan community in Brimbank, a very engaged Sri Lankan community and one that is a very peaceful and happy and welcoming community. I think when you look at the work that this council's done around welcoming new arrivals and our work around multiculturalism and the We Are Brimbank campaign, it's so important that we all recognise the importance of living in peace and harmony. So I offer my condolences on that basis. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hiddich. Councillors, is there anyone else who would like to speak for this motion? For or against? No? Okay, I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, so given that, given the incident in Sri Lanka, I think it would be appropriate for councillors to all stand and for us to observe a minute's silence for the victim. So I'll ask everybody to stand please and we'll observe that minute's silence. Thank you. Thank you, councillors. Thank you, members of the gallery. Please be seated. Okay, we're now moving on to our second condolence for this evening, which is the passing of former Prime Minister, Mr Robert Bob Hawke. And I think it would be more than appropriate for council to note the passing of former Prime Minister, Mr Bob Hawke. So I have a mover of the motion. Councillor David? Thank you, councillor David. And is there a, is there a second for this item? Councillor Papafoudeo? Would you like to speak, councillor David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Indeed, I rise to convey the condolence and sympathies of Brimbank community following the passing of Australia's 23rd Prime Minister, Robert James Leehawke, or as he was publicly known, Bob Hawke. Bob was arguably one of Australia's most influential and effective prime ministers and public policy leaders, and it is only appropriate that Brimbank pay tribute to his life and achievements. Bob was born on the 9th of December 1929 in border town, South Australia, the younger of two sons of Congregational Minister Glenn Hawke and Ellie Hawke, a former teacher. In 1953, he went to Oxford University as Western Australian Road Scholar and submitting his thesis on the history of wage fixing in Australia. In 1956, he married his first wife, Hazel. Two years later, he took a role with the Australian Council of Trade Unions, ACTU, and the family moved to Melbourne. Bob played a key role in the 1959 basic wage decision and by 1969, he was elected as the President of the ACTU. In October 1980, Bob was elected to the Federal Seat of Wheels in Melbourne's North, which encompassed the suburbs of Brunswick and Corbrook. On the eve of the 1983 election, being called by Prime Minister Malcolm Fraser, Bob Hawke was elected as Labor Party leader on the 8th of February 1983 and he went on to lead the Labor Party to his greatest election in 40 years under the theme of Bring Australia Together. Bob went on to lead Australia from 1983 to 1991 and his contribution to public life has helped shape modern Australia. His government's reforms relating to the economy, health, education, social, environmental and human rights were transformational in the scale impact legacy. The Hawke and Keating governments' economic reforms deregulating and opening of the Australian economy to the world led by foundations for Australians to experience its longest continuous period of uninterrupted economic growth. The creation of Supermation provided Australian workers with the first-of-a-kind system and safety in retirement. The creation of universal health care for all Australians, Medicare, still to this day is the backbone of our community's health and wellbeing. Hawke's educational reforms led to the large increase in children's finishing high school. The creation of the modern-day social safety net helped ensure no one in Australia got left behind. Hawke took action to protect the environment, including Tasmania's Franklin Dam and entry Kakadu and leading an international campaign to protect Antarctica. On foreign policy, the Hawke government established the Asian Pacific Economic Cooperation Forum, the APEC, still stands today, helping an end to the apartheid in South Africa and responded compassionately in the Titanium Square massacre. Bob Hawke had no tolerance in racism or mistreatment of any way, shape, form or kind. As one of Australia's most diverse and disadvantaged communities, we can be sure that Bob's legacy has helped change lives and give our community more opportunity to succeed. Key members of parliament from the Western Region who serve in Hawke governments, including Barry Jones, member of Laurolelo, Alan Griffiths, member for Maryborough, and Peter Clayton, member for Maggiavon, whom Bob was particularly close to. Bob's longtime electoral officer, Mimi Tambourino, has recounted to the council staff his fortunates for helping the people of the North West. Bob was Labor's longest-serving Prime Minister and third-longest-serving Australian Prime Minister behind John Howard and Robert Menzies. Bob's ability to lead through vision, belief, lacrysis, was unconscious bringing people together and leaving no one behind were all the essence of his success and now his legacy to us. Bob loved all Australians and in return, Australians loved Bob Hawke in perfections and all. Bob passed away at the age of 89 last week at his shrine in Sydney on Thursday, 16th of May. He survived by his wife, Blanche Dapuchet, and his three children, Susan, Stephen and Rosalyn. Bob, the people of Brimbank will miss you. Yeah. But we are grateful and thank you for your legacy. A sincere condolences to his wife, Blanche Dapuchet, and their families. I, Madam Mayor, I happen to know Bob. I know it's a long speech, but I happen to knew Bob during my apprenticeship.
Sorry, can I just grant a human extension for councillor David? Thank you.
For my apprenticeship year, I became a shop steward, if you like, where I used to take the membership of members there and we used to meet once a month at the Trade Council Council. And he was coming down to the meeting each time. He was one of those people that he was mixing with. Lots of good people, very good people. He was one of those people that everybody liked. So Bob, as we said earlier, he'd be badly missed. He was a very good man, a very good politician at the very end and God bless him. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor David. Councillor Papafoudeo, would you like to speak?
Vale Robert Bob Hawke, former Prime Minister of Australia. Last week, we lost a legend of the ALP. Bob Hawke was a visionary leader who had a modern approach for moving Australia forward. He was not afraid to make some tough decisions for the betterment of our society. Thank you, Bob, for Medicare, a healthcare system which provides free access to medical services. Thank you, Bob, for the Sex Discrimination Act. Farewell to a Labor icon. Australia is forever the better because of Bob Hawke. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, councillor Papafoudeo. Councillors, is there anyone else who would like to? Councillor Tarkos?
Thank you. I want to quote an article by Lenore Taylor, who I feel best sums up the way I feel about the strong outpouring of grief related to the political leadership that Bob Hawke led. Quote that "this generation probably never felt truly confident that a political leader cared more about the electorate than their own survival", unquote. This is what separated Bob Hawke, is that he was a pioneer, a reformer. He had ambitious plans, big ideas. The reforms kept social equity clearly in mind and at the forefront. The aspiration that no Australian child would live in poverty was a big aspiration, but it was admirable. Never achieved, not in our lifetime, but still, he had the passion to believe in it. All felt investment in what he planned, as well as his visionary environmental statement regarding the precious river systems. In Bob Hawke's passing, we mourned the kind of considered, determined, purposeful political leader at a time where politicians advanced big political ideas and argued their merits over months and years. Vale Pop Bob Hawke, a truly inspiring leader who talked like us and advocated for the working class and the migrants and a fair go-for-all.
Thank you, councillor Tarkos. Councillors, anyone else would like to speak? Councillor Trum?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just would like to ask some more from the councillor David, councillor Papafoudeo and councillor Tarko. I believe everyone, every Australian, they love Bob Hawke. They love Australia, the migrant background migrant. So I believe Bob Hawke is one of the most diverse and migrant community, disadvantaged community. He can show us his legacy, help change lives and give the community more opportunity to succeed. Bob Hawke's also his ability to lead through vision, belief, platitude and consensus, bring people together and leave with no one behind was the essential to his success and now his legacy to us. Bob Hawke, I believe it more people of a migrant community will miss you. But we are grateful and thank you for your urgency, our sincere condolences to his wife and his family. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Trum. Councillor Hiddich, would you like to say a few words?
Just a couple of words, Madam Mayor. I put my words together through the eyes of a young person. I first ran into Bob Hawke in Brisbane at Bothwick Meatworks when I was on a round Australia working holiday trip with some friends. And we'd all got our union tickets, our meatworkers' union tickets, and we were all learning the meatworking trade in Brisbane and various different meatworks up through Queensland. And Bob came to Bothwicks, which is on the Brisbane River, probably a thousand or so people working there. And he pulled together a union meeting and I think as a 19-year-old and with a whole group of young men mainly, it was inspirational. And I guess I followed his career. I ended up in Canberra a few years later and lived at a youth hostel there. And we used to regularly head down to the Canberra Recess and the front bar there and did find Bob there with a schooner and having a chat to young people about the world and so on. But he really did motivate young people. His work to, you know, basically Save the Franklin with Bob Brown, his work to do a whole range of things reminded me in this last few days of just how important it is, particularly where young people are today. They've got enormous stresses on them with climate change and housing affordability and HECS debts and various other things. It's, I think there's a real need for politicians like Bob and others to be able to engage with the young generation because they are our future. And at the moment, I'm concerned about where we're heading with engagement of our young people and I guess looking after the planet and their lives into the future. So for me, Bob Hawke reminded me of my youth and the work that he did and many other politicians and community activists did to protect and nurture the planet, the economy, the nation and groups of communities and people within it. So for me, that's his legacy that I remember as a young person and I'll never forget it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hiddich. Councillors, is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against this motion? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you. Okay, we're now moving on to item 7.3, which is a condolence motion for the passing of Mr Savas Konikos. And I think it would be appropriate for council to note the passing of Mr Konikos. So may I have a mover of a motion of condolence? Councillor Papafoudeo? Move the motion, please.
I'll move the motion as is. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Papafoudeo. Seconded by councillor David. And councillor Papafoudeo, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you. Last week, we farewellled a committed and voluntary Greek community member, Mr Savas Konikos. Savas was born in Cyprus and arrived in Melbourne in 1951. He lived in St Albans for over 60 years and was dedicated to the Greek Club of St Albans for over 40 years. Savas was also the president for the Senior Citizens Club for the last 37 years. Before retiring, Savas worked as a welder at Massey Ferguson in Sunshine for 50 years. I thank him for all his hard work and his time. On behalf of Brimbank City Council, we send our condolences to his family, in particular his wife, Panayotta, his three children, Georgina, Stavrula and Anna, his three grandchildren and five great-grandchildren. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, councillor Papafoudeo. Councillor David, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I will. I knew Savas all my life. Him and his brother, Nick, they are community builders. They started back in 1955, 56 and they built the West Sunshine Community Group, referring to St Andrews. They are the architects behind that church. And at the latest stage in 1963, if I'm not wrong, that would have been right, but that, they built the St Albans Church and the community there, St Empress, in Half-Aut Street. I did travel with the same ship back in 1957, 58 with his wife, Panayotta, as councillor Papafoudeo said before. So I knew him all his life, him and Nick, his brother. To the family, of course, they're all here today and tonight. Our condolences, I believe, Madam Mayor, a letter of condolence should be sent to the family on behalf of council to tell them that we feel very sorry in losing their loved ones. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor David. Councillors, is there anyone else who would like to speak for this motion? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we have one more condolence motion and that is the passing of Mr Arthur Frangis. So I think again, it would be appropriate for us to note the passing of Mr Frangis. So may I have a mover of a motion? Councillor Papafoudeo?
I'd like to move the motion as is. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Papafoudeo. And is there a second? Councillor Tarkos? And councillor Papafoudeo, would you like to speak to this motion?
Yes, thank you. Brimbank City Council wishes to send condolences to the family and friends of Arthur Frangis, who was tragically killed on Wednesday, the 9th of May, on his way home after volunteering from his local soccer club. Mr Frangis had lived in St Albans for 54 years and was a valued community member, remembered for his friendly nature and beaming smile. He dedicated a lot of his time to the Westvale Soccer Club and also the Greek community in St Albans. The club paid tribute to him with a minute's silence last week, their players wearing black-armed bands and the team playing in his honour. Brimbank recognises that our volunteers are an integral part of our community and our thoughts are with his wife, Eleni, and his three sons, John, Agyrius and Bill. And I'd like to say a few words in Greek for both Arthur and Savas. Εκ μέρος του δημαρχίου Brimbank, σας προσφέρουμε τα βαθύτατά μας συλλιπητήρια στις οικογένειες αθανασίου φράντζι και σαβασκόνικος. Χάσαμε δύο άτομα, τα οποία είχαν προσφέρει διάφορες θέσεις ευθύνης και πάρα πολλές ώρες συμπαρικία μας. Τους ευχαριστώ με πάρα πολύ. Καλώ τους ταξίδι. Εωνία, είμνημη, αφθον. Ευχαριστώ.
Thank you, councillor Papafoudeo. Councillor Tarkos, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. I'd like to also, Madam Mayor, express my deep and heartfelt condolences for Mr Arthur Frangis, Mr Konikos, both very important community members. Arthur Frangis was a lifelong member of the Westvale Soccer Club and a longtime volunteer. His dedication to the Westvale Soccer Club and his beloved community needs to be noted. As for many of our grassroots sports clubs in Brimbank, it is the local volunteers such as Arthur who keep the clubs going and thriving. Their unwavering commitment and passion for their clubs is what drives them to become more than just members, but to give something back and becomes more like a family than service. That we today pay tribute to this and with this motion, that without people like Arthur and Savas Konikos, our clubs and our communities would struggle and be poorer. My thoughts and prayers are with his family and friends during this difficult time. Forever Westvale, forever St Albans. I'd also like to read something in Greek. Κυρία δημαρχος, ήθελα να εκφράσω θερμά τα συλλιπητήρια του κ. Φράγκισ κ. Κόκκινος και την πενθούσα οικογένεια τους. Ήτανε μέλος της ποδοσφαιρισκής λεσχής του Westvale, πολύ καιρό ευλοντής. Η αποφασίωση στην ποδοσφαιριακή ομάδα Westvale και την αγαπητή του κοινότητα τους σε Νόλβεντς πρέπει να αναγνωριστεί. Πολλοί από τους κοινωτικούς αθλητικούς συλλόγους επιβάλλουν μόνο με τη βοήθεια των εθελετισμών ανθρώπων όπως τον κ. Φράγκισ κ. Κόκκινος. Είδε τέστε στοιτούς και το πάθος τους για το σπόρ. Τους είναι αυτό που μας οδηγεί να γίνουν περισσότερα τότε απλά μέλη είναι και οικογένεια μας. Είναι πιο πολύ στη συνέχεια απλά την επερέτειση είναι και ένα πάθος κάτι στην καρδιά τους. Χωρίς ανθρώπους σαν τον κ. Φράγκισ και τον Κόκκινος, τα σωματία θα παλεύουν πολύ. Οι σκέψεις μας και οι προσευχές μας είναι με τις οικογένειες τους και η όνεια πάντα είμνημητος.
Thank you, councillor Tarkos. Councillors, anyone else who would like to say a few words? Councillor Bork?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. These last 12 months, I attended the Westvale Soccer Club a number of times. I could see what a close-knit community this is with some members attending regularly at this club, enjoying, among other things, a nice cup of coffee usually prepared by Arthur. Um as one member of the community put it after his passing, we have no one to make coffee now. That reflects how much Arthur meant and means to the community. I would like to um uh to pass on my condolences to his wife Helen and his three sons, other members of the family, the committee and its members of the Westvale Soccer Club and the community at large. And of course, I would also like to extend my condolences to the Konikos family and acknowledge the great work that Savas did for the community for such a long period of of time. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Councillors, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Councillor Trum?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um I don't know Mister Arthur very well. I just meet him a couple of times to when I come to the community risk. But I'm very impressed with all the time and the one he being volunteer for his community. And I would like to take our crew and send my condolences with his family, his wife and his children, also to share the loss with his community. We understand is the how it's important with the people we did involve very long time and how much we miss him when he lost like this. And I think it's we should like support and encourage is the older volunteer for the community in our council. And once again, I would like to send condolences to his family and his community.
Thank you, councillor Trum. Councillor Jiddich.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also wish to um offer my condolences to both the families of Savas and Arthur. I did both, uh did know both gentlemen. And it's always very sad to you, to lose two people like Arthur and Savas who have done so much for their community. I think we need to remember the work that they've done in our community and also to remember the example that they set for volunteerism at a time when um it was really needed in the community to have two people like that lead their communities into bringing them together and you know, ha- having the functions that they did and helping out with their clubs or whatever communities they were in. I offer my condolences to their family and may they both rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jiddich. Councillors, are there any other speakers before we go to the vote? No? Okay, I'll pop it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, thank you. Now, I know there is a number of great community members here today for those condolence motions. Um that's the end of those motions for this evening, so you are free to go if you'd like to, or you're welcome to stay and witness, uh watch the rest of the council meeting. So we are on to num- item number eight now, which is congratulations. And there are two items of congratulations this evening. Item number eight point one is the Seven News Young Achiever Awards, and I think it would be appropriate for council to congratulate two Taylors Lakes residents, Miss Bianca Shembry and Miss Lavinia Tosev on their nominations in the recent two thousand and nineteen Seven News Young Achiever Awards in the Melbourne Studio of Art Young Artist Award category. So councillors, do we have a mover of a motion? Councillor Allen?
Yeah, I'd like to move the motion that council congratulates Taylors Lakes residents, Miss Bianca Shembry and Lavinia Tosev on their nominations in the recent twenty nineteen Seven News Young Achiever Awards in the Melbourne Studio of Art Young Artist Award category.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Is there a second for that motion? Councillor Tarkos and councillor Allen, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. Um the Brimbank City Council congratulates the two local young people who were nominated for these awards, uh Bianca Shembry and Lavinia Tosev. Taylors Lakes locals were nominated. Um Lavinia is a thirteen year old singer, songwriter and multi instrumentalist who plays piano and guitar. She is a hardworking musician who often volunteers her talents at local community events. Bianca is a fourteen year old and is also a singer songwriter. She has travelled overseas to attend workshops and perform, even releasing two singles on iTunes. Both Bianca and Lavinia should be congratulated for their dedication to their art and their great achievement for being finalists.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Would the second like to say a few words?
Firstly, um I would like to also congratulate um the the for these prestigious awards to be nominated. And I'd also like to commend them. And if there is an opportunity, it would be great to showcase their work at the Bowery Theatre. I think it is really important that uh we as a council recognise and support the young emerging artists such as these two in Brimbank through our Be Bold Arts Capital at the Bowery Theatre.
Thank you, councillor Tarkos. Councillors, anyone else who would like to speak for this motion? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. We have another congratulations motion this evening, and I think it would be appropriate for us to congratulate the Water Gardens Shopping Centre staff and all emergency service volunteers who assisted council with the running of the very, very successful emergency service expo on the sixth of April two thousand and nineteen. So is there a mover of a motion?
I'll move the motion, Madam Mayor, and that council congratulates Water Gardens Shopping Centre staff and all emergency services volunteers who assisted council with the running of the suc- successful Emergency Service Expo on the sixth of April two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you, councillor Jiddich. And is there a second for the motion? Councillor Papafoudeo? Councillor Jiddich, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just quickly, Madam Mayor, um at the expo which I attended, and it was really fantastic, it really was. We had participants from several agencies, including Ambulance Victoria, Australian Federal Police, Australian Red Cross, Brimbank State Emergency Services, Metropolitan Fire Brigade, St John's Ambulance and Victoria Police. It was a well attended event and offered the community a greater awareness of these services um that the agencies provide through interactive displays and activities. All the staff were really fantastic. They interacted so well with the children and all the children were in awe, of course, and it's a great way for the children to learn, as you know, Madam Mayor. It's a great way for children to learn about all the emergency services and that there actually are services out there that do what they do. So all well done to everyone. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jiddich. Councillor Papafoudeo, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. Again, congratulations to all involved in such a highly successful Emergency Services Expo and community event on the sixth of April. I was quite disappointed I couldn't attend on the day, but I was extremely impressed to have received several positive comments. I'm grateful to the Water Gardens Shopping Centre staff and all the emergency services volunteers who supported this important event. But I'd also like to say special congratulations on a well deserved success um to Tom Redsmoski, Alex Coronas and their dedicated team. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Papafoudeo. Councillors, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this motion? Councillor Trum?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um yeah, I also would like to congratulate the Water Garden staff and all the volunteers. I did bring a ten on the day on the expo and I feel very impressed um with anything it's been provided. I did speak some with the president and the be- and the children and they um very uh enjoy and it's have them a chance to communicate and um learning from all the provide from the um emergency. And I think it's the the first time Brimbank Council have the emergency expo in Water Garden. Congratulations. And I believe we should have another one in Sunshine. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Trum. Councillors, anyone else would like to speak for this motion? Councillor Lancashire?
Thank you, uh Madam Mayor. Um I had the pleasure of attending this at the same time as the director of infrastructure of uh uh your website. And I think we all had quite an interesting experience and a bit of fun, particularly for the kids and some older kids too. It was great sitting on a police motorcycle and when announcing that I was a councillor, I was even allowed to wear a bulletproof vest. So I thought that was really good. So uh great effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Lancashire. Councillor Pham?
I think um those, the event like this is a necessary to have uh regularly in our municipality. Um it's give the opportunity for people to to see that, you know, the authority are not that scary and how to act when emergencies uh situation happen. Learn before it happened rather than learn when it happened. So I think um this event should be continuous.
Thank you, councillor Pham. Councillors, anyone else like to speak for this motion? I can personally attest to this, what a great event it was, having taken a three year old and a one year old and a three year old having a tantrum when she had to leave. So it just shows it was very successful with the children. So I'll put that onto the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to item number nine now, which is public question time. And Miss Flea, I understand we have not received any questions from the public this evening. I'm just checking the audience and Peter Thompson is here, so we're not sure. So we will move right on to item number ten, which is petitions. And there is one petition to be received this evening. So councillors, I'll be asking for a procedural motion to formally receive this petition. It is in relation to car parking issues in Jane Avenue in St Albans. So is there a mover of a motion to receive this? Councillor Tarkos?
If that the petition is received. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, as per the papers. Thank you. And is there a second for the motion? Councillor Borg? And I'll put that straight to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you. Okay, we are now on to item number eleven, which is minutes and reports of special committee meetings. And there are no minutes or reports from special committee meetings. So we will move straight on to item number twelve, which is officer reports. So there are fifteen reports but for consideration by council tonight. And tonight we will be having our directors introducing the reports as well, which is something we haven't done for some time. We're bringing that back. So we'll move straight on to item twelve point one, which is planning activity update and delegate decisions, April two thousand and nineteen. And we have Miss Gilbert, who is the acting director tonight. Miss Gilbert, would you like to introduce this report, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Planning Activity Update and Delegate Decisions Report is a monthly report that highlights planning permit activity within Brimbank for the previous month. This includes new applications received, decisions issued on permit applications and also orders issued by the Victorian Civil and Administrative Tribunal. It's recommended that council notes the report.
Thank you, Miss Gilbert. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a motion? Councillor Lancashire?
Um Madam Chair, I move the motion as in the agenda.
Thank you, councillor Lancashire. Is there a second for this item? Councillor Trung? And would the mover like to speak? No, councillor Trung. Oh, thank you. Um no? Would the second like to speak? Councillor Trung? No? Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this item? Councillor Hidditch?
Just briefly, Madam Mayor, for, um I just wanted to observe that uh the activity that's going on through planning applications continues to hold up. We've had a a fair bit of uh rumour and innuendo in the uh in the system about the impact of uh the banking uh slowdown, approvals and so on, and a whole range of other matters. It's good to see in the numbers that we have um a slight downturn this month, but not not significant. And that we have a an ongoing flow of of applications coming into council for both residential and industrial development. So it's paperless to see that. And I think our city's in really good shape at the moment.
Thank you, councillor Hidditch. Councillors, anyone else would like to speak for or against this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to item number twelve point two, which is the Planning Scheme Amendment C two hundred and its post exhibition. And Miss Gilbert, again, I will ask if you could briefly introduce this report.
Brimbank Planning Scheme Amendment C two hundred seeks to place a heritage overlay over a number of properties in Sunshine as well as one site in George Streets and Albans. The purpose of the report is to present to council the submissions received in relation to the amendment and for council to consider its options to progress the amendment.
Thank you, Miss Gilbert. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a motion, councillors? Councillor Hidditch? Okay, would you like to put your motion? Microphone, sorry. Councillor Hidditch, please turn your microphone on.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Uh as per the original motion, but an amendment to item G. Uh item G spoke about originally writing to submit us to thank them for submissions to the Brimbank Planning Scheme C two, C two hundred. Uh the amendment also adds and also writes to all parties who were notified of the amendment to advise that uh council has resolved to abandon part one and in part four, council has resolved to request the minutes for planning to appoint a planning panel. Uh that's a minor administrative amendment, but an important one for all the people who live in the area.
Councillor Hidditch?
Yeah.
Is there a second for the amendment? Councillor Lancashire, councillor Hidditch, would you like to speak to this item?
I would, Madam Mayor. Um I guess this particular uh C two hundred amendment has um raised a lot of questions in people's minds and has um confused, I think, a lot of people. Uh and there has been a lot of discussion through the streets and through the the homes of uh I guess both Sunshine and St Albans. Uh in this particular uh amended motion, uh there are uh suggestions that, or recommendations that we remove the rezoning component from the uh heritage overlay proposed in Sunshine, that area, Grand Junction Estate and Matthews Hill Precinct, if we go to name it that. And that uh we also um make a number of uh different amendments to uh that particular scheme. We also uh abandoned completely the half houses scheme that was put forward uh in the recommendations originally. Uh I guess um in in my view, uh in the context of what's gone on and what's going on around town, uh this seems a sensible way forward to me. Uh I think that the um retention of the heritage overlay, but the uh abandonment of the uh rezoning proposal in the Sunshine area is is something that has been put forward and I think makes sense to most people. Uh but there will always be differences of opinion around these particular matters. Uh so I guess uh in behalf, on behalf of uh the harvest award aspect of um this particular motion, I would propose that uh the amended motion as put forward be uh accepted by council and and voted on accordingly uh in terms of the part two, the part one, sorry, the George Streets and Albans recommendations, the abandonment of that, I think that also uh should be proceeded with as per the papers. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hidditch. With the second like to speak, councillor Lancashire?
Uh thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to endorse the uh comments made by councillor Hidditch on this. It's been a a very long worked um and complicated heritage amendment, but still very important to um build these and protect these heritage areas within Brimbank. Uh the community's been obviously heavily involved in this and that has resulted in changes to the amendment. Um I'd also like to thank the staff that have um got this through over this long period of time and worked with the community to achieve this result. It's good for the uh uh the community to have that protection and thank you to the staff for all their work. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lancashire. Councillors, is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're moving on to item twelve point three, which is Lead West's establishment of a special committee. So I'll go to Miss Morrissey to introduce this report. Madam CEO?
So the purpose of this report, Madam Chair, is for the council to consider the establishment of a new committee for Lead West. Lead West has representation from the six councils in the western region of Melbourne. The new model is recommended as a way to build on the previous work taken by Lead West and progress regional advocacy and projects that facilitate the sustainable growth and development of our region. This report also seeks to confirm a councillor delegate and a proxy. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam CEO. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this particular item? No? Do I have a mover of a motion? Councillor Jiddich?
The motion, Madam Mayor, and um in part H I, councillor's uh Tarkos as the councillor delegate and councillor Congreve, uh yourself, Madam Mayor, as the proxy.
Thank you, councillor Jiddich. Is there a second for this item? Councillor Tarkos and councillor Jiddich, would you like to speak for this item?
Yes, um Madam Mayor, just a few words. Um Lead West has been going on for quite some time. In fact, it started when I was the mayor in two thousand and seven. And I was on the inaugural committee and we had Ralph Willis there, which was um pretty amazing at the time. But as things um over time evolve, of course, Lead West has now um seen that perhaps we need to do things in a different way. that perhaps we need to do things in a different way. And I do welcome the way that in which we will be doing things in the future. So I commend both Councillors Tarkos and yourself for being on the committee. And I know that the six councils together will do a wonderful job in supporting the western region and advocating for the western region for many reasons, whether it's jobs, whether it's services, whether it's programmes, funding, whatever we can do to make our region better. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Judy Chair. Counselor Tarkos, would you like to speak?
Thank you very much. Um, Madam Mayor, as um Counselor Judy Chair said, that the Lead West was established in two thousand and seven as a regional organisation for Melbourne's West. Since that time, um Lead West has focused on advocacy for the region and has remained a nonpartisan, a non-for-profit membership organisation, which includes a total of sixteen, six municipalities, Brimbank, Hobson's Bay, Melton, Maribyrnong, Muny Valley and Wyndham. In two thousand and eighteen, uh Lead West commenced a strategic review process, which determined Lead West required a new governance model to assist the organisation to achieve its objectives in a more effective, sustainable manner, moving to a committee from a company to be a corporate-based and on a similar model as the Inner Melbourne Action Plan Model. Following deed registration uh in thirtieth of June two thousand and nineteen, it is anticipated the new Lead West Committee will commence. It's a great honour to be uh uh on this committee. The new Lead West Committee will continue to provide a mechanism for regional approach to advocacy and the delivery of a ten-year strategic plan. The proposed key areas of that strategic plan will be jobs and skills, as we know, a huge priority for Brimbank, uh, transport, infrastructure and connectivity, again, another important issue for Brimbank, health and wellbeing, and finally environmental rehabilitation and sustainable development. And I'd just like to add that uh as a council, we also adapt our own, we've got our own advocacy department as well. We we um we'll be providing a report in the next report that um fights for a lot of these issues in a much more granular and um uh uh issues close to Brimbank. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Tarkos. Councillors, is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against? Counselor Hidditch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I speak for, but I um I just wanted to put a couple of contextual things on the record. Um, I represented to council on Lead West for the last couple of years and I'm a great champion for Lead West, particularly as it stood. Um, I believe that the model we had, which was similar and became similar in many ways to the G twenty-one model, um, basically allowed members from both community and council uh to vote at at the board table uh on issues of of substance, regional substance, and that was a very good model. Uh, this new model uh basically brings the Lead West Committee inside the Local Government Act framework, section eighty-six committee. And it allows council members to vote and and the new incoming chair to vote, thirteen-member vote. Um, and that is a very good model as well. It's been proven in other parts of Melbourne as a model. Um, my concern is in the longer term that it does not become a closed system. Uh, I think we all would know that closed systems uh do often, I just just decay. Uh, but I'm I'm basically, I'm being convinced by both the the chair and the the CEO that with the input of external members to particular discussions around key strategic areas of interest and so on, that there will be a lot of, I guess, new blood and energy and thought coming into those decisions that are made at that regional table. Um, Lead West is a vital organisation for this region. We do not have political capital in this region like many others. G twenty-one, for example, down Geelong has a lot of political capital, a lot of marginal seats and an ability to influence government. We, as a group of councils in the west, rely on our own, I guess, advocacy and our own um research and evidence uh that we gather through communication with our our community generally and with others to put together proposals to better our community. And uh my concern is that we continue to actively do that through the committee structures that the uh new arrangement will put in place. Uh, I'm cautiously con- uh cautiously confident that it will deliver uh the needs of this community over time. Uh, I must say on the record that I am concerned at the way the um the state government does interact with local government. Uh, I think the interaction is generally through the CEOs of all the councils on most bodies that we have originally. That's the primary uh primary mechanism through both the Western Region Partnership and the Lead West arrangement now. But there will be councillors at the Lead West table as well and with Wameta. So for me, that um we need to have a community voice behind Lead West. I think there's a real conversation needed in our community about we how we establish a an effective um stand beside Lead West community voice that enables all the issues that cross the west uh to be to be to be brought forward out of an alliance of community groups that can influence government in other ways than which the the local government Lead West Committee will do. So for me, I think there's a lot of thinking and talking to be done around this, but it's good to see that things change. They need to change from time to time. Uh, we have a new proposal before us that the committee of Lead West have have ticked it. And I guess we we go with it and evaluate it in twelve months' time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hidditch. Councillors, is there anyone else would like to speak for or against this item? No? I will put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're now moving on to item twelve point four, which is advocacy update, January to January to April two thousand and nineteen. And councillors, as I would like to speak to the next item, may I have a procedural motion to appoint the Deputy Mayor as temporary chair of the council meeting for consideration of the next item? Counselor Papafodeo moves. Seconded, Counselor Judy Chair. All those in favour? Carried. Welcome, Counselor David.
Thank you, Councillors. Um, this item was put forward by the mayor, item twelve point four. I will have a second, please. Any questions in reference to the um? Sorry. Relation to the report. Sorry, yeah. No questions? Thank you. Will someone second it, please? The motion?
Sorry, I'll I'll move it as per the papers.
Second to Counselor Judy Chair. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
So it's with great pleasure as the mayor and as the champion of the resilient portfolio, along with my fellow champ portfolio holder, Counselor Tarkos, to have led a refreshed advocacy and engagement strategy that has successfully built on our previous good work in this advocacy space. I'm proud to have helped our community secure some new outcomes and commitments through ongoing strategic and advocacy work. So you would see from the report that we've been particularly busy over the last quarter and from January to April. I've personally attended with our CEO over twenty meetings with key members of parliament, including ministers, parliamentary secretaries, members of parliament, federal election candidates. In fact, I actually think that I've met with half the cabinet, which is almost unheard of in in local governments. In March, we had um the Prime Minister of Australia, Scott Morrison and Daniel Andrews down at Sunshine Train Station, signing the heads of agreement for the Melbourne Airport Rail Link, which is a significant achievement for this community. In fact, we know that this is the biggest transformational change in any local government area in Australia apart from the CBD. It's the biggest investment and the importance of this investment cannot be understated, especially given the once-in-a-generation opportunities it gives to our community in terms of jobs, skills, education, health and fairness outcomes. So much of the advocacy work that I've been leading along with Counselor Tarkos has been focused around the broad economic and social opportunities and that this and other transport projects will bring to our community. And that includes the Western Rail Loop and the proposed suburban rail loop projects. This includes what we've been asking for is to have Sunshine identified as a priority precinct and for us to get all of the benefits that come with that. We've asked for a straight seat at the table and for Brimbank to be engaged as a formal partner in the governance structure of these major projects. We've also asked for a jobs, skills, business and community working group to be established to leverage the project outcomes for the things that I talked about before, jobs, skills, education, health. And we've asked for the development of an integrated transport strategy for the west of Melbourne. What we see here in this project and what's happening in Sunshine, we can liken to the assembly lines of Ford, Holden and Toyota, which provided generations of employment for the people of the west. And this is the new employment hub for the west of Melbourne. The benefits will be felt not just for now, but beyond construction for local workers and businesses and for the decades that are coming. And I can assure all the councillors and the members of the community that are watching this that our positive and collaborative approach to the key strategic arts has been well received and has resonated. We love it when we go and talk to ministers and then we hear it back through other means. It means the message is getting through. And Helen, or our CEO, is nodding her head. So um in some other great news, I am delighted that we've made some exciting progress in relation to securing new commitments around St Albans Health and Wellbeing Hub and the Calder Freeway, including a funding commitment and a number of letters of support, which I'm sure Counselor Tarkos will love to speak to shortly when she gets up to have a chat. So in terms of the federal election, I think it's really appropriate that we have a discussion around the federal election. And I say a few words in in relation to what occurred on Saturday, which I'm sure was a bit surprising for many. Um, it certainly wasn't the outcome that we were expecting. But as of Monday, the twentieth of May, it is reported that the coalition government led by the Prime Minister Scott Morrison will be re-elected with a majority government. And we look forward, Brimbank looks forward to engaging with and working with the new Morrison government and of course, the Victorian Andrews Labor Government to deliver a number of projects, particularly the jointly funded ten billion dollar Melbourne Airport Rail Link via Sunshine. In acknowledging the outcome of the federal election, I would also like
Would you like extension of time on the bill?
Uh, not quite yet. When I run out, I'll ask.
Go ahead.
So yes, uh so in acknowledging the outcome of the federal election, I'd also like to acknowledge the work of the opposition leader and the federal member for Maribyrnong, who represented Brimbank for a long period of time, Mr Bill Shorten. And I would also like to formally congratulate the newly elected incoming federal member for Fraser, Mr Daniel Malino. We'd like to thank Bill and Daniel for their advocacy engagement efforts with Brimbank and our community, which saw us secure a number of election commitments from the Labor Party, which of course will now not come into fruition as Labor Party have not formed government. But we'll talk about that in a moment. Before I, before moving on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Would someone move for extension of time? How long?
Two minutes.
Two minutes? Second by Counselor Hidditch. Thank you.
So before moving on to those, uh, the election commitments, I would like to acknowledge a number of other federal MPs and their reelection, including Maria Van Bakken, who's a member for Cornwall, Brendan O'Connor, the member for Gordon, and Tim Watts, the member for Jellibrand. So there were a number of promises from the coalition in relation to working Brimbank. And whilst the Liberal government has not yet committed to the St Albans Health and Wellbeing Hub, they have made another other, a number of other commitments, including ten billion dollars towards the Melbourne Airport Rail Link and fifty million dollars towards upgrading the Calder Freeway. The other not very widely publicised commitment was made by the coalition on the fifteenth of May by the Minister for Cities, Urban Infrastructure and Population, the Minister Alan Tudge, and that is for the North West City Deal. So I guess there's a number of people looking at me going, what is a city deal and why is it important to us? So I think it's important for us to talk about other city deals that have happened, for us to get a bit of an understanding of what that could mean for Brimbank. So to date, the coalition government has supported eleven city deals across the country, including a recent one in Geelong. And the Geelong City Deals has helped that region secure funding to the tune of three hundred and fifty-five million dollars. And there are some notable projects in there, including the Shipwreck Coast, Geelong Convention and Exhibition Centre, Avalon Airport, the Geelong Revitalisation Project, Geelong Safe Power Project and many, many more. So why is it important to Brimbank? The announcement for the minister puts us in the right place for a significant portion of new funding. And I'm personally committed to maximising the potential of this new city deal announcement. So watch this space. In closing, councillors, I think that you will all agree our new positive and refreshed whole-of-government stakeholder and community advocacy approach has already seen Brimbank gain some very, very effective momentum. And I thank all of our councillors and staff, and in particular my portfolio holder, my co-portfolio holder, Counselor Tarkos, in supporting this strategy over the period of time. And let's look forward to the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, would the second like to speak? Thank you. Um, any comments, Counsel?
Um, really thrilled about the Northwest City Deal. And I think we look forward to working in partnership with the newly elected federal and existing state government. Since February, just to add to the advocacy that we've been doing, uh, which was comprehensively reported, since February, we also received letters of support in relation to the St Albans Health and Wellbeing Hub from a variety of stakeholders, including the Victoria Police, Netball Victoria, the Western Bulldogs, Women's Health West, and also the Les Twintman uh um Foundation, just to name a few. In relation to the Calder Freeway upgrade, I can report that the federal coalition government has allocated uh fifty million dollars towards upgrades as part of the two thousand and nineteen slash twenty budget. And most would agree it's long overdue. Additionally, I can report that the federal labor opposition has also stated it would provide fifty million towards the Calder Freeway. The other issue that I'm very pleased to note, and I believe that Brimbank have been leaders in advocacy on this issue, is that three Brimbank schools are being included in the Victorian government's new harm minimisation gambling pilot project, which will teach kids and parents about minimizing the risk of excessive gaming in game bullying and also exposure to gambling content on kids' games. Uh, the three schools that were chosen, Madam Mayor and fellow councillors, are Kiladowns College, uh, Marion College and also Jackson School. And I refer back to our um unanimous uh motion that uh this program uh that has been supported is a fantastic investment by the Victorian government. Uh, these are the kinds of programs that we support and we push for, which will support parents with practical steps to help the kids have a positive gaming experience and increase the children's awareness of the potential risks that can come from online gaming and gamification. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Tarkos. Any other comments, Councillors? Counselor Hidditch, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, I support the comments that have been made already, set up front. Um, I guess my my other observation would be that um in this election just gone, uh, we've we've noted the commitments that have come from uh the various parties. But uh when you look in from outside and you're a long-term resident, I think a lot of people would say that's good. But a lot of people would say uh what happened in terms of those parties and all those big projects and all that investment that's needed here to lift this community. Uh, for decades, we've been seeing a lot of the same thing. These major infrastructure investments are extraordinary. That has to be acknowledged. But at the local level, uh, with all the need there is in health, in education, in jobs and so on, we have big-ticket regional investments going on. Uh, we have a big ticket that's in health with what's going on at Sunshine Hospital and so on, and that's good. There's nothing wrong with that at all. It's fabulous. But we also need local area ones. We have a very poor prevention system in the health area. We have a very poor uh, well, a good primary care system, but one that can be strengthened enormously. There are some big-ticket items that need focusing on. In education, we keep visiting schools that need work and so on. So I don't want to sound negative, but I do want to say openly and honestly that there are a whole range of local area uh needs that are not being adequately met by state and federal government in terms of what they're providing in terms of funding for this area. And that needs to improve significantly. And our advocacy needs to reflect some of that, in my opinion. Um, I am but one member of a council and I know there are a variety of other opinions and that's that's terrific. I think that's that's healthy. Um, my other point would be around the city deal. Camp uh CEO, uh, Miss Morrissey and myself went to Canberra a couple of years back with a delegation of mayors and Lead West. Uh, Lead West was advocating for the infrastructure initiatives that are coming forward now, uh, as were all the councils. Um, but there was also a discussion with the Prime Minister and Cabinet Department about city deals and what was needed to be in them. I hear the, I was on the Economic Development Committee of G twenty-one in Geelong a decade ago. And a number of those items were read out tonight were items that were being progressed back then. So these are long-term advocacy initiatives, they are long-term project development exercises that have gone on. In Brimbank, what are those projects beside the major infrastructure that we want? That's our, that's our trick now is to actually sit down and say, what are these major initiatives that will bring economic and social, environmental development to our city that we need to include in a Northwest City Deal? This is a multi, a, a two-region, uh, city deal, which is about big-ticket infrastructure and big-ticket outcomes. So there's a lot of work for this council to do in conjunction with the councils of the, the west and the north to actually sit down and work out what are those big-ticket items we need to, uh, to reflect on. So for me, um, I think, you know, personally, this is very personal. The advocacy approach we've taken to date has delivered a whole lot of benefit, but we need to rethink it again. We need to.
Time councillor?
One minute?
One minute extension, councillors. Thank you.
For me, no, sorry.
Thank you.
For me, uh, we have to be really frank and honest with what our needs are, as well as highly supportive, uh, of the relationships we have and so on. We need to do both. And, uh, I, my concern in watching the last, uh, uh, federal election go by is that we were not, uh, uh, I guess, frank and fearless enough in some areas. We were very keen to make sure that our relationships were strong and that's perfectly valid. No, no difficulties with that, but we also need to be frank and honest when we need to be for our community. So I leave it at that. Uh, congratulations to everyone who's been involved and all that's been achieved. It's, it's not insignificant at all. It's quite significant. But I think there's still a piece of work for us to do around getting our focus right and getting our strategic projects and initiatives in, in, in line with the city deal right as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Headish. Any other comments? Uh, be- before, if you want to conclude, any other councillor that wants to speak on the matter? No? Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, councillor David. Um, I just wanted to round up on some of the comments that councillor Headish made in relation to our advocacy approach. And whilst I agree there is always more, we always want more. I think that the days of the Oliver Twist advocacy approach going cap in hand to a government and saying, give me money, are long gone. And that we need to be more creative and innovative in the way that we approach, um, advocacy. It is about relationships, in my view. You cannot buy the hand that feeds you and you need to find a way of working with the people in all levels of government and making it attractive for them to invest, creating projects that mean something, that will return investment for not just us and the community, but for them as well. And the example that I will give is the Melbourne Airport Rail Link. Melbourne Airport Rail Link is a ten billion dollar investment, which is sitting right here in the heart of Sunshine. As I mentioned before, there is no other city in Australia that is getting that level of investment. We've also done very well in terms of three level crossing removals. We've got commitments to the Calder Highway. We have a Sunshine Joan Kerner Health Women's and Children's Hospital. We have a one point five billion dollar brand new hospital going in in Sunshine. Now, I'm an independent candidate, I have no political affiliations. But I can sit here and look at those investments and say, we've done okay out of the governments so far. And much of that is driven through the advocacy work of this council. For the last six months, we have worked on a different strategy. We're approaching things in a different way. We're not just asking for money, we're asking for partnerships, investment. We're saying, here's our St Albans Health and Wellbeing Hub, and this is what it's going to deliver for you in terms of preventative strategies. That's different. It's a different narrative and it opens a different conversation. And it's a long game. Advocacy is a long game. It's not going to pay off tomorrow. It might pay off in two, three, five, ten years' time, but we have to start somewhere. So I commend the, the work that we've done and I fully stand behind what we are doing as a council. And councillor Tarkos and I are working very, very hard in the background to secure more commitments going forward. So I commend the report to council. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I put it to the vote now, councillors. All those in favour? You know, Miss Ricardo, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are moving on to item number twelve point five, which is the governance report for May two thousand and nineteen. Mister Hogan, would you like to introduce that report, please?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The monthly governance report is a standing item within the council agenda. It's a summary of recent governance, governance activity in accordance with best practice and good governance principles and in compliance with the Local Government Act nineteen eighty-nine.
Thank you, Mister Hogan. Councillors, are any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a mover of a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll move the motion as printed as the business papers.
Thank you, council duty chair. And is there a second up for this item? Councillor Trung, councillor duty chair, would you like to speak?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, this, um, uh, report actually falls within my portfolio, which is the innovation portfolio. And it does highlight the importance of monthly governance report, which provides ongoing assurance and good governance. It also provides ongoing transparency to our community on the way we conduct our governance in accordance with best practice and good governance principles. This month's report, apart from other things, uh, does also include councillor expenses, a new procurement policy, and Brimbank's submission to the parliamentary inquiry into recycling and waste management. And I don't want to dwell too much on that one, Madam Mayor, but, um, I really don't know why we had to have a parliamentary inquiry, since I think that the views around recycling and waste management have been known for a number of years. However, I do welcome, um, our submission and I thank the officers for putting it together in time, even though then the deadline was extended, but at least you got it done. So well done. So just to say a few more words on that one, uh, Madam Mayor, the six hundred million dollars that we've got sitting in the sustainability fund, hopefully will go a long way into providing some answers and solutions to our waste problem. And, uh, we all know what they are. We all, we have our own wasteliter and, and strategy. And we have our own views on that. But I welcome the reports and certainly congratulate everyone on all their, um, activities during the month. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor duty chair. Councillor Trung, did you want to speak to this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just would like to add something with councillor Margaret. Um, I think it's, um, first I would like to, um, thank you for all the hard work from the team to put all the report together for us, uh, in nearly and helped her to understand it, uh, what's going on in the last month reports. And, um, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Trung. Councillors, are there any other, um, anyone else would like to speak for or against this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you. So we'll now move on to item twelve point six, which is the quarterly financial report for the period ending thirty one March two thousand and nine. And Mister Ma, would you like to introduce this report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is to provide councillors with a quarterly progress report of its financial operations for the period ending thirty first of March two thousand and nineteen. The report also provides council with a point in time forecast of the end of year result as of the thirty June. The report is presented to council for noting.
Thank you, Mister Ma. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification on this item? No? Is there a motion? Councillor Duty Chair, seconded councillor Headish. Councillor Duty Chair, would you like to speak? No? Councillor Headish?
One sentence. Um, I support the, uh, the reporters coming forward. Uh, I also would like to just, um, reflect, we've got, um, a budget that, uh, is moving around a bit and with all the elections and other things that are happening in our universe, there's quite a bit of, um, movement with a new budget coming forward and that as well. And this, the results that are being, being, uh, put forward here will impact into that next year as well. Um, I guess, um, my, uh, request is that we think a bit more about, uh, what we might be able to do in terms of substitution of small projects, uh, into the budget to make a difference in our community going forward without over, overreaching or, uh, overindulging in terms of, uh, new activity. But, uh, there are a number of, uh, I guess, needy projects out there in small scale that can make a significant difference. So if we do have, um, surpluses and slippages and various other things happening, we have a little bit of think about some things we might be able to substitute. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Headish. Councillors, are there any other speakers for this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're now moving on to item number twelve point seven, which is the draft Sunshine Leisure Centre Master Plan two thousand and nineteen. And Ms Brackett, would you like to introduce this report, please?
Thank you, Chair. Um, council has worked closely with the community to investigate options for enhanced service at the Sunshine Leisure Centre. The purpose of this report is for council to consider endorsing the draft Sunshine Leisure Centre Master Plan two thousand and nineteen as attachment one for a period of community consultation. Following the consultation period, a further report will be provided to council detailing any submissions received.
Thank you, Ms Brackett. Councillors, are there any questions? Question? Can councillor Lake Shee?
Madam Mayor, the, um, I just, uh, the, uh, the, the report there refers to a thirty five million dollar, um, makeover of the, uh, uh, swimming centre. Um, i- is there any money set aside in our ten-year budget for, um, for this work?
Ms Brackett?
Thank you. There's no provision at the moment for the thirty five million dollars, but there is small provisions for some of the smaller improvements over the next couple of years.
Councillor Lake Shee, does that, you have another question? Does that answer your question?
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, you have another question?
Yes, the, uh, i- i- is this, uh, project built into our recreational facilities plan to be done at any stage within that plan?
Ms Brackett, are you able to respond?
Could I ask for a question of clarity about the recreational facilities plan, please, councillor Lake Shee?
Oh, yeah, um, we have a, uh, adopted, uh, recreational facilities plan, um, going forward. Um, is this referred to in that plan in any way?
Uh, so the sports, the sports.
Sports facilities, yes.
No, the, um, leisure centres are outside the scope of the sports development plan because they have their own master plans.
Councillor Lake Shee, further questions?
Yes, um, just, um, the, the, the preparation of this, um, it, it looks like it's outside council's normal, uh, abilities of work, the plans, the, uh, um, the assessment of the costs and things. Was this done by a consultant? And, um, how much did we spend getting that result for this report?
Thank you, councillor Lake Shee. Ms Brackett, are you able to answer that question?
I can ask, answer part of the question now and take the other part on notice. So the, um, there was a committee, um, consultant group also involved in the import to the plan. And I'll have to take on notice the cost of the consultant for the plan.
Councillor Lake Shee?
Uh, my last question on this, um, th- this is a thirty five million dollar project and there doesn't seem to be, uh, the money for it or reference in the plans. Um, I'm just wondering, i- i- is, uh, what's the process for managing the community expectations in terms of that consultation process? If I could get some comments on that.
Ms Brackett, are you able to answer that question?
Yes, so through the community consultation process, we'll be explained to the community that there's no provision in the current budget for the, um, it's the plan. But I guess as part of future budgets, council might consider making provisions based on other commitments and priorities in the plan.
No further questions? Councillors, are there any further questions or points of clarification on this item? Councillor Trung.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, my question is, I see on the report in the year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, it, the total income is two million eighty-three, three hundred seventy-six and the expenditure is three, three million, three hundred fifteen, two hundred thirteen. It's for the year two thousand seventeen, uh, eighteen. So what happened in last year? And is the how we cover the expenditure?
So councillor Trung, I'm not sure if that question relates to the master plan per se, but I will throw to Kath Brackett. Kath, are you able to answer that question?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Thank you, council, for the question. Those figures, uh, relate to the operations of the centre, like what the income expenditure are, what the assumption in the master plan is that over a period of time, when we build more compartments and increase the capacity of a leisure centre, that we will ultimately reduce the subsidy that council pays towards running the centre.
Councillors, any other questions or points of clarification? No? Okay. Is there a motion? Councillor Headish?
I'd like to, I'd like to move the motion as per the papers.
Thank you, councillor Headish. Is there a second for that item? Councillor David, councillor Headish, would you like to speak to that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I'd like to speak to it and I'd also like to clarify some of the points of, of the questions, uh, from, um, I guess, a community perspective, uh, given my history around this one prior to coming to council. Um, as Ms Brackett said, community's been working with council for a number of years on, on this particular initiative now. Um, it came up, uh, some time back when, uh, people were looking to have the outdoor pool opened in winter, the heated outdoor pool, it's been there for ten years and there were a lot of petitions, various things going on. Community also identified that there were potentially, uh, savings inside the, uh, the, uh, operations of Sunshine Leisure Centre that would enable potentially, uh, other things to happen there if we could, uh, do some work on that. So council, in its wisdom, uh, appointed, uh, some people to go and do some investigation. And they also appointed consultants to go and, uh, do some work after the community produced a report. Um, the consultants being the, the same consultants who've worked with us on, uh, St Albans Leisure Centre as well. Um, the work that was identified needing at Sunshine, uh, came about because back ten years ago, um, the rebuild of Sunshine Leisure Centre, or a bit over ten years ago, uh, was scoped down to meet capital, uh, I guess, capital budget requirements of the day. And that meant that the gym was left at the same size it was at the time, about two hundred and thirty eight square metres, uh, compared to the thousand square metres we're proposing to put into St Albans in the future. Uh, the, the, uh, spaces for, for programme work upstairs where people did their, uh, exercise and so on, uh, were limited to a very small area, the same as previously. And the water space was not, not enhanced significantly at all. So we had big gaps. And those big gaps, despite the community saying, uh, you need to double and treble the size of these things, invest now and save all these, um, operating dollars in the future, weren't listened to and the, uh, building went ahead as it is today. Now, today, after all the investigation that's gone on, ten years later, we find that those facilities, the scope of those facilities should have been in place from the start and we would have saved millions of dollars over that ten-year period, at least a million dollars a year probably. And I guess that, um, is the, the impact of, of building something, uh, under scoped and under provided. And now we have a, I guess, a, a Sunshine Leisure Centre that is crammed, uh, with people swimming, with people in the gym and with people, uh, looking for more program space. We've had, um, people go out and have conversations with people who are complaining about all this, councillor David, uh, the CEO and various others have all been involved in that. Um, we do need a lot of work at, uh, at Sunshine Leisure Centre. This work has been done slowly and progressively with council by community, with community over a period of five years, I would say now. And the community has been very tolerant. They've seen that Sun, uh, St Albans Leisure Centre needs to be worked on and that this project needed to be slowed for that. They have accepted that half a million dollars a year has been put into the council budgets over the last couple of years to allow, um, improvement to happen in there. And that has, that has occurred. They've acknowledged that there's, uh, all this work needed and this, this master plan reflects what community's been saying for a decade. But they also acknowledge that there's a lot of capital investment needed. I think my, my take on it is that we do need to go back to community now, having worked with us for so long and having put forward these recommendations anyhow pretty well in the first place, to say, this is what's come about. Here's the plan, here's all the proposed new facilities and their location and so on. Here's a six-step implementation plan, six stages, not thirty five million at once, but six, six stages with a, a, a batch of different initiatives in there. Uh, we need to talk about that with community and get the feedback and then reflect on that in the end. Um, I guess, uh, again, I would say the community has been highly tolerant, uh, with this particular initiative, despite all the, uh, the access issues and the difficulties of, of getting in and having a swim or an overcrowded gym. All of that's been tolerated while this work's gone on. So it's important it goes back, it's important we get feedback and it's important we then consider how we start to do things at Sunshine Leisure Centre going forward. Not just say, we haven't got a budget, we need to think about what we create. And I guess, uh, for me, the other point that isn't mentioned a lot in the plan is the, um, connection to car parking. Uh, we have a multi-deck beside it. Uh, this particular, uh, master plan talks about a thousand new members. Those new members need space to park their cars and so on. Car parks are a critical part of leisure centres wherever you go around Melbourne. You'll have to have a decent one, otherwise they don't work as well as they should. So there are impacts on the multi-deck and, uh, we need to consider that going forward as well. So, uh, I leave that with councillors. Uh, for me, the community consultation is a much-needed step. And, uh, I look forward to us, uh, receiving the feedback and then doing some advocacy plus around what's needed to be done at the Sunshine Leisure Centre. They're mo- they're our most important facilities. They were, they're our melting pots, as we keep saying with St Albans. Uh, Sunshine Leisure Centre has a catchment area equivalent to the size of St Albans.
Councillor Headish, you need a extension?
Ten seconds. And, uh.
Two minutes extension, please, thank you.
And, uh, we do need, we do need to have the, the service levels right and the facilities right in the longer term too. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Headish. Councillor David, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I can say that one might be the, perhaps regrets. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I can say that one might be the, perhaps regrets been over the years as a councillor was the swimming pool here in Sunshine. We should have finished the jigsaw then in reference to building something for tomorrow. But we built something for that particular time. Um, out of that, um, it was a lot of, um, we brought along the, yes, the group called Sounder at the time. And that came about the swimming pool. And at the very end, we, um, finish up getting dismissed, or sacked, if you like. He started from that period. But it's true, um, it's good to learn as we go by. If you make mistakes, you, you have to try and correct them. And indeed, we got before the St Albans Leisure Centre. And I'm very deeply supportive of building something for tomorrow. And if we build it, we have to build it with the best of all. And this is what we haven't done here in Sunshine. I was very, very sorry at the time that, but the advisors were professional people at the time and all around us. That's what we had, our money was such, so we built exactly what we had at the time. And I, it's very, I'm very deep integrated, if you like, in that, that period of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor David. Councillors, anyone else that would like to speak for or against this particular item? Counselor Pham?
Um, I just want to, to look at the census figure that in nineteen ninety six, we have about one thousand forty eight hundred seventy nine seven hundred ninety three people in Brimbank. Now we have a hundred ninety four, uh, thousand three hundred and nineteen people in Brimbank. The difference is forty six thousand, over forty six thousand people that in ten year, but we still have to squash in our two small, um, um, capable are providing, um, the proper facility for our, um, residents. So I think it's a time to think that we have to move forward and expand.
Thank you, Counselor Pham. Councillors, any other, any further comments on this item? Counselor Lake Shee?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Um, look, I do have some cautionary notes in regard to this in terms of, uh, the fact that it's not budgeted, it's not built into our plans, um, and for quite some time. Uh, in terms of coming up with a, um, consultation process of what's needed now, um, i- if, you know, we can seriously look at this in ten years' time, then I certainly do believe that that, um, the whole nature of recreation, um, swimming facilities, technology, uh, will be different at that time and we would certainly need to revisit the whole thing. Um, we do also have, um, uh, and something that's extremely important for local government to work through with the council, um, priorities in terms of what might be the best priority and best investment. With the, um, super transport hub coming through, um, it might well be that to get people to stop here, we might need a cultural centre there or some other facility like that. Th- this may not be the best investment for Sunshine, um, to make the most of our opportunities. We need to make sure we're considering all the opportunities, um, rather than sta- starting to try and lock us in. So it's the question of, um, I, I guess, the expectation, um, and to make sure that we're considering all the variety of options um, that I think should be done. Um, pursuing a single item, um, uh, particularly of that size of budget will, will push out other things and push out other things for a much longer time. So I just had those cautionary concerns. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Lake Shee. Councillors, are there any further comment? C- Counselor Trum?
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I just would like to ask, it's like, A, we be aware is the population in Brimbank City Council, it's the development very quick. And we have, um, the Sunshine Leisure Centre, it is not only for the local member in Sunshine. I believe that every member in Brimbank can join when the master plan is finished. Uh, even like the St Albans Leisure Centre. So I, um, think it the member in the community really look forward uh, for the upright of the master plan for Sunshine Leisure Centre. And, um, I fully it, uh, support for this plan because I think that's the niche for every member in the community. Um, that's what is all I would like to add completely with the councillor, it, Haddish and all other councillor is already comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Trum. Councillors, is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this item? Counselor Pham? Did you, you've already spoken, sorry. Is there anyone else that would like to speak who hasn't already spoken? Counselor Alan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, so, yeah, I think it, look, these master plans are very important. Now, whether they get voted on, um, on the different stages later in the future or not, they still need to be developed regardless. I think it's important, many aspects of whether it's, you know, the Keeler Downs, um, whether it's the St Albans Leisure Centre, or whether it's, um, you know, for the future, something for, you know, might be Sunshine or a future one for St Albans or other areas within our municipality. I think master plans are the proper way to go forward, um, so that we have a better idea of what are the things that we hope to achieve in the future and how are we going to go about that? And those plans may change and that's fine, but at least we've set out what are the priorities within our municipality for certain activity centres. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Alan. Councillors, is there anyone else that would like, Counselor Judy Chair?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I do support the recommendation, Madam Mayor. Um, Counselor David and I have had a long history with the Sunshine Leisure Centre. Um, if anyone just look back in history, um, it took a while to build it. We built it with whatever funds we had at the time. There was definitely no major stream funding, like there would be nowadays perhaps. Uh, it's, it was always a different process, but we built, built what we could at the time under the advice that we had with the money that we had. We all knew in our hearts that somewhere down the track, that leisure centre would have to be refurbished and this master plan does identify that. I'm only sorry perhaps that it took ten years to do that, but we're there now, um, at least by having the master plan, by going out to community consultation. At least the community are now where this council is actually doing something to look at the, at the leisure centre into the future. So, uh, there's no reason why this city can't have two fantastic leisure centres, one in one section of the city and one in the other to be able to cater for everyone's needs. So I do welcome the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Judy Chair. Councillors, any further comments in relation to this item? Counselor Hiddich, as someone spoke against this item, you have the right of reply.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'd just like to, uh, again restate that uh, this particular initiative has been worked up with community with a committee that council formed and subsequently disbanded when it did its work. Uh, we engaged consultants who, uh, produced a whole lot of material that, that looked into Sunshine Leisure Centre and St Albans Leisure Centre operations and came up with a series of recommendations around management structures and alternative ways of doing things. We accepted that. We, uh, we also, um, put a report to council when that committee did its work, uh, which was endorsed by council. And that, that piece of work, uh, was sent off to the CEO and to the officers for consideration in the annual budget processes. At that point in time, the council then started to put in half a million dollars a year to do much needed maintenance and upgrade works to all sorts of parts of the, uh, the facility. And we've been doing works of late to get it ready for the, the impact of St Albans when it comes along. But it also did pieces of work, uh, with the consultants that were not only just miking, but also, um, I guess, capital works consultants who did that initial concept planning. And Counselor Lake Shee was asking questions, have these plans been costed? Yes, they have at that early stage of development and that's where a staged master plan has been put forward with component costs around each stage that are pro- produced by professionals. The, the point of all that is so the council can now consider it as the committee asked it to do some time back, quite some time back. This has gone very slowly, this process, because of what's been going on at St Albans. It is something that the community that was engaged in this, the people who are engaged in the committee, were concerned about and have been asking questions, where is it at? So this is the loop, this is the closing of the loop, putting back the master plan into community for people to look at it to see how the work that they've done with this council over five years now has been considered and what is coming back. And, uh, the consultation is vital. So I, um, commend the, uh, report, the master plan report and the, uh, the motion as, as proposed to councillors for their support. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hiddich. Right on time. Now, councillors, I will put this item to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we will now move on to item twelve point eight, which is Arts Advisory Committee Draft Terms of Reference, two thousand and nineteen. Ms Brackett, would you like to introduce this item, please?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, the Brimbank Arts Advisory Committee has recently undergone, undergone a review, which is in line with the recently adopted cultural strategy. The purpose of the report is to present the revised committee terms of reference for council's consideration and council's also requested to appoint three council representatives to the committee.
Thank you, Miss Brackett. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a motion? Councillors?
With the councillors, with the, it's, it's actually an amended motion, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry. So the amended motion, part A, amends and adopts the Arts Advisory Committee Draft Terms of Reference, two thousand and nineteen, so that the position of chair is replaced with two councillor co-chairs. B, appoints Counselor Pham and Counselor Alan as co-chairs and as then again pointed in the business papers, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Judy Chair. Uh, one more member, sorry?
Oh, I believe that Counselor Tacos was going to be the other member. Thank you, Madam Mayor, sorry about that.
Thank you, Counselor Judy Chair. Is there a second for this motion, councillors? Counselor Papafatia? Counselor Judy Chair, would you like to speak to this item?
Um, uh, simply the same, Madam Mayor, that finally we got the Arts and Advisory Committee right. And it's coming to council and so we can start having the meetings and getting on with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Judy Chair. Counselor Papafatia, would anyone else, would there any other councillors that would like to speak for or against this item? Counselor Alan?
Just to say, uh, being on the previous Arts Advisory Committee, I'm looking forward to working with Counsel Pham and Counsel Tacos.
Thank you, Counselor Alan. Councillors, any other? Counselor Pham?
So, uh, recently been in the Boundary Theatre, uh, um, committee and now is moving toward to, um, Art Advisory Committee. I'm looking forward to see many more colour and, you know, many more diverse pieces of art that come through Brimbank. Uh, so to me, actually not just the Public Art Commission, but it's all, uh, from the very minimal pieces that we collect from, say, our neighbourhood houses, our local school, our, you know, indoor art collection. I want to see art in every culture and every aspect. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pham. Councillors, any other, um, comments on this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. It's done. Uh, so we will move on to item twelve point nine, which is Muslim Community Forum. And I'll ask Mr Hogan to introduce this item, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item is responding to a council resolution seeking a report on the possible opportunities for a community forum, inviting leaders from the Australian Muslim community and the Brimbank Marabong Interfaith Network to facilitate a community conversation to continue to strengthen multiculturalism and address racial, racial prejudice.
Thank you, Mr Hogan. And, uh, councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this particular item? No? Counselor Alan, I saw a hand up. I assume you would like to move this motion?
That's right. Please, speak to it?
Yeah, uh, can you move the motion, please?
Oh, sorry. Um, yeah, move the motion as printed in the business papers.
Thank you, Counselor Alan, seconded by Counselor Judy Chair. And would you now like to speak to the item?
While I'm up here. Uh, thank you. I just want to start by thanking Dan Hogan and the team for all the work they've put in. I know we've had many conversations about the best way in which council can support these forums. Uh, I'd also like to thank the Bosnian Mosque in Deer Park, the Turkish Cypriot Mosque in Sunshine, the Islamic Council of Victoria, Brimbank, Marabong Interfaith Network for all their input and support and willingness to partner with Brimbank. Uh, being one of the most culturally and religiously diverse communities in Victoria, it's important for Brimbank to be an active role model amongst other communities across the state. Seeing this report we have now gives me the confidence that we can begin to break down the cultural and religious stereotypes that exist in the community.
Thank you, Counselor Alan. Counselor Judy Chair, would you have any comments on this item?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, I do, uh, welcome the report. Um, just to mention, Madam Mayor, the Welcome Brimbank Campaign, campaign whilst it's formal now, has really always been the Welcome Brimbank Campaign here. It's only just been formalised. Um, the Muslim community has always been welcome here, as have other groups in our municipality. In fact, I think there's probably not one nation in the world that's not represented here in Brimbank. So I look forward to attending the many activities that all the groups invite us to. And I know there are a number of iftar dinners and we are holding our own. So I certainly look forward to all of those and commend the report and hopefully it'll go through, which I'm sure it will. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Judy Chair. Councillors, Counselor Tacos?
Just to add, um, to this wonderful initiative, I just want to commend the work of the Marabong Brimbank Interfaith Network. This is a fantastic, inclusive network that in my mind epitomises the strengths and the diversity of Brimbank in how we can all live in har- in harmony and strengthen multiculturalism and help mitigate and address racial, uh, prejudice. I commend this initiative, as with other initiatives that they run, and I also, um, uh, in, in, in assisting, uh, community awareness and community building and also opening it up to the whole of the Brimbank community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Tacos. And Counselor Borg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, like my fellow councillors, I also welcome this report. As we know, the city of Brimbank is endowed with a very colourful tapestry of social fabric. Indeed, more than a hundred and sixty languages are spoken amongst our community. This diversity also includes various religious affiliations and the like. The Muslim, uh, community is one of them. Members of this community have been and still are subjected to a lot of racism and discrimination. As a local government, we need to expand our opportunities and find more ways to create a more inclusive and harmonious environment, more specifically with the Mo- Muslim community. Um, I'm pleased to say that last Friday, um, I had the opportunity to attend the iftar that was organised by the, uh, Brimbank Council at the Delahay Community Centre. And it was great to see both Muslim and non-Muslim members of the community coming together and share such a wonderful experience. So I highly commend this report to council. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Borg. Councillors, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Counselor Hiddich?
Just briefly, Madam Mayor, I'd like to stand in support of the paper as well and echo the words that have gone before me. Uh, for me, uh, Brimbank is a welcoming, inclusive, tolerant and respectful community that has, um, really excelled in this space over the decades. Uh, we do have pockets of, of problematic issues and that occurring from time to time. But initiatives like these are so important that we keep building the, uh, capacity and capability of our community to, uh, basically get on with each other and to, uh, welcome each other in ways that only Brimbank knows best. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I commend the report.
Thank you, Counselor Hiddich. Councillors, any further comments in relation to this item? No? Oh, Counselor David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just commend the report, hold on, the wonderful report by the officers. I, look, I, I'll happen to be, I think it was about fifteen, sixteen years ago, at the Bosnian, uh, festival, uh, where they had a, uh, a, an E-man coming from Bosnia. And I remember his words at that time. He said that, uh, we brothers and sisters, we are the sons and daughters of Abraham. And what a wonderful thing, we, all of us, the whole world can understand and respect each other's religion. Be no wars, no, it be happiness all round. But somehow, we have to make it happen. We have to make us understand that we have to live to, we are living together. My neighbours, well, if you look around us, every one of us, we've got a different nationality of neighbour. We have to make him friends. Um, I've got my wife sometimes, so look, all this, I said, look, he don't see that, you haven't seen that. You have to be friends. That's the only way it can go forward. And I, uh, I, I do, again, commend the report because we want to do this type, type of things for our people here in Brimbank. Thank you, Madam Mayor, yeah.
Thank you, Counselor David. Councillors, any further comments? Counselor Pham?
So in one occasion, I'm with, uh, Counselor Tacos, visited the mosque, um, in St Albans. And it was very overwhelmed by, um, Muslim young, um, citizens that come up to us and say, you know, this is very, um, emotional for us because we, we know that someone from the Aut- Because we, we know that someone from the authority that can pay the visit to see us. And there was a lot of discussion about how do they, uh, have opportunity to engage with other wider community. And have opportunity to grow also as a leader. And those comment are mainly from Muslim women as well. So, um, with this policy, um, coming up, I think it's a ve- very important step. Um, that start the long journey with engaging the Muslim community. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fam. Councillors, any further comments in relation to this item? No? Uh, councillor Trung?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I usually attend to the mosque when the Muslim festival in. Deep Park and in St Albans too. And, um. I think it's just the report is the highlight to show if the council is support for the Muslim community. Especially, uh, the, um. The woman in the, in Muslim community, they really impressed it, uh. How it the council, it can support and encourage them. They just come to us, it's like some of the training is being provided from the council. Some is, um, encourage them is how to get the job. And I think it does is the important because we are, it's a diverse community. And we have the large member, um, cow community in our area. I think that's one is to show it how the support and strongly from the council to the, um, Muslim community. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Trung. Councillors, any other commentary in relation to this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're now moving on to item twelve point ten, which is Living Melbourne. Our Metropolitan Urban Forest Strategy two thousand and nineteen. And I will throw over to Mr Whiteside to introduce the report.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is for council, uh, to consider endorsing the Living Melbourne. Our Metropolitan Urban Forest Strategy, which is an attachment one to the report. Uh, the Living Melbourne Strategy complements council's actions under the Brimbank Urban Forest Strategy and also the Greening the West Initiative. Uh, the report recommends that council endorse the Living Melbourne Strategy. And approve the use of council's logo for their documentation and also to write to the Chief Resilience Officer. Uh, to in, uh, to advise of council's endorsement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Whiteside. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? I saw councillor Langshie had his hand up. I assume you are wanting to move a motion? Yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move the, uh, motion as in the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second for this item? Councillor Tacos? And would the mover like to speak? Councillor Langshie?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Living Melbourne, our Melbourne. Our Metropolitan Melbourne Urban Forest Strategy complements council's actions under the Urban Forest Strategy two thousand and sixteen. And Greening the West two thousand and thirteen. Council endorsed Greening the West in two thousand and thirteen, which was positioned as a regional approach to greening the western region. The global challenges of urbanisation include extreme events and population growth. Eighty percent of people in Australia are living in a city. It is vital to develop urban resilience through the individuals, institutions, businesses. And systems within a city to adapt, survive and thrive, no matter what kind of chronic stresses and acute shocks they experience. Resilient Melbourne is a unique collaboration of thirty-two metropolitan councils, the Victorian Government. Statutory authorities such as water, parks, roads, planning EPA and academia. Council's urban design team is part of this. Council's involvement includes financial contributions and participation on resilient Melbourne working groups. Senior reference groups and local delivery. Resilient Melbourne is now seeking endorsement of Living Melbourne by all organisations that have been involved in its development. The Living Melbourne Strategy will be launched on the fifth of June two thousand and nineteen, World Environment Day. Living Melbourne articulates the benefits of an urban forest in the following ways. Social connection and cohesion, connection to country. Social economic benefits, financial savings from delivering services usually provided by grey infrastructure or mechanical means. Air conditioning, road shades. Physical and mental health, equitable access to open space for recreation, relaxation, socialising, wellbeing and happiness. Living Melbourne identifies six key actions including. Protect and restore species habitat and improve connectivity. To scale up greening in the private realm, B C C is already a leader. Council plans to retrofit the municipality with vegetation, quality public places. Supported by sustainable water use, including one hundred and five park upgrades. And thirty-two million dollars investment and six industry awards. Thirty million dollars worth of blue-green infrastructure projects across the west. Since two thousand and thirteen and four industry awards. Two hundred thousand trees planted since two hu- two thousand and fifteen. And one of the first councils to mandate trees in planning schedules. It's appropriate that council endorse Living Melbourne in the manner in which council endorsed Greening the West. And the use of council's logo on the Living Melbourne document when released. I certainly recommend this report for council's consideration. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Langshie. With the second I'd like to speak, councillor Tacos?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would like to endorse what, um, my fellow councillor colleague has just said. Can I just also say that the Greening the West partnership has been absolutely phenomenal for our community? It is the way that I got involved in council by tree planting at Sudanum Park. By endorsing our council's, um, also the urban forest stra- uh, strategy. And we are on the map as being one of the first councils ever to make cha- changes to the planning scheme schedules. Requiring the inclusion of trees as part of the development on private property. That's something that I'm very proud of. I'm also also very proud that this council that not only achieved the first, this is a first. But has continued to promote tree plantings across Brimbank. Any strategy that encourages, uh, to give life to the vision of, uh, an urban forest needs our support. By forest, we mean native trees, shrubs, grasslands, soil and water. That, uh, uh, that run through, which makes innumerable contributions to our community's health and wellbeing. The benefits can and cannot and should not be underplayed. The u- urban forest cleans our air. Water reduces damaging heat on neighbourhoods, provides vital habitats for our, uh, native flora and fauna. And exposure to nature reduces stress and the incidence of mental illness. And provides opportunities to strengthen community bonds by providing spaces. As councillor Langshie, um, mentioned, we are one of the, the leaders in spaces of parks. And creates bonds for community by providing these spaces so people can congregate. Have a barbecue and enjoy physical and social a- a- interactions. This council should endorse the Living Melbourne, uh, as a stakeholder and continue to lead the way. In protecting and planting more trees, as well as making existing grasslands and open space. Maintaining existing grasslands and open spaces.
Thank you, councillor Tacos. Councillor Allen, did you, would you like to say?
Yeah, please. Thank you. Um, some mediograph for you. I was shocked to learn that the eastern suburbs have a canopy cover of twenty-five percent. And I looked at what we have in the west and it's a dismally low four percent tree canopy cover. That's one sixth. It's a huge difference, but there is hope. So as councillor Langshie has said, there are six different actions which are really good. And it gives us the hope that by twenty thirty, it goes from four percent to more than double that, to nine percent. Another ten years later, it's projected to come up to fourteen percent. And by twenty fifty, it's projected to be twenty percent tree canopy cover. So in the next thirty years, we'll have five times more tree canopy cover than we have now. And that's a good thing.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Councillors, any other comments in relation to this item? Councillor Hiddich?
Very briefly, Madam Mayor, support all that's been said. Um, my input would be that, uh, resilient Melbourne is a really valuable piece of work. And the piece of work that's been done in this council since we got them out here at the, in the first year, uh, we formed. Uh, has been really useful going forward. We have a lot of resilience issues, the environmental resilience for this community is one of them. Uh, but we have many others as well. The social and economic resilience are other matters that we need to focus on this particular report. I commend to council. All, it's all been said already. The report says it all. Uh, it's much needed and, uh, let's get on with the job.
Thank you, councillor Hiddich. Councillors, any other comments on this item before we go to vote? Sam's keen to vote. Okay, we'll go to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we are now moving on to item twelve point eleven. Now, we have a conflict, councillor Judditcher?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, I'll declare an indirect conflict. Um, I'm the president of Cabitalia and Cabitalia does operate E G M's.
Thank you, councillor Judditcher. We'll just update the minutes and ask you to leave the room. Thank you. Okay, councillors, um, we are now going to look at item twelve point eleven. Which is the final draft electronic gambling policy two thousand and nineteen. And I will throw to Mr Hogan to introduce the report.
Uh, thank you again, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is to present both feedback from community consultation on the draft electronic gambling policy two thousand and eighteen. And present the subsequently revised final draft electronic gambling policy two thousand and nineteen for the consideration of council.
Thank you, Mr Hogan. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? Councillor Langshie?
Three, Madam Mayor, just, um, three questions, but the fir- the first one is, we of a council have, uh. Often commented negatively on, um, uh, the, uh, the state government relying on gambling money. And, uh, uh, this, this policy, um, introduces a commercial lease on. Uh, two of the clubs that have, uh, E G M's, uh, on their property. Um, I'm just wanting clarification on, on that principle as to, are we going into a realm now? Of being also, as with the state government, relying on gambling mon- money and getting money directly from gambling. Um, so one first question, thank you.
Ms Brackett, are you able to respond to that question, please?
Um, thank you councillor. No, the purpose of the, um, commercial lease is to strike lease that is transparent. And has clear process around it. The intent is not to raise funds for council. And the intent is not to have bill shock for the clubs as a result of the commercial lease that's struck.
Thank you. Ca- is there any other questions or points of clarification? Councillor Langshie?
Yes, um, three, Madam Mayor. Uh, I, I was, my next question, you, you've actually almost answered my next question, thank you very much. But the bill shock is, is one that's, um, uh, of concern in the sense that these clubs do, uh. Um, charge, um, uh, their, uh, sportsmen and women to be members of the club, particularly, uh, children who are members of the club. Um, additional costs on those clubs can make it difficult and have to be passed on. Um, inevitably, that will probably be to groups like the kids and the fees that are charged. Um, so I am just, in terms of bill shock, it's, it's the degree, um, a- and getting some confidence that, uh. Um, that these increases won't be excessive or damaging to those clubs. Have some comments on that, please?
Ms Brackett?
Thank you. Thank you. The intent is that a commercial lease is struck with an independent valuation. And from that point, there'd be up to an eighty percent discount available to the club, subject to achieving a number of things that would be agreed. That's a similar, um, basis by which we strike leases with other sports clubs as well. They're offered a lease. And then they're discounted back up to eighty percent, subject to achieving particular objectives.
Further question, councillor Langshie?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One last question. Um, uh, this is a general policy and not specifically of the leases per se. However, these clubs, um, will need going forward to, uh, borrow money, I presume, to undertake works. To, uh, expand their, uh, uh, facilities on site. Uh, the length of the leases, um, i- is, is certainly of question and there has been referred to limited leases. Again, uh, the way the, uh, this policy might influence those leases. Um, can be very significant to those clubs in terms of going forward and doing work. So, again, I'd like to have some clarification, um, o- on that point. Thank you.
Ms Brackett?
Thank you. Thank you. Um, councillor, if you refer to the appendix, particularly, um, the section marked nine point seven. Which talks about the lease. It describes that the lease will be determined on a number, a number of elements. Including the core business of the leasing. And one of the aspects of that is a commercial perspective. And we do understand that, and we have been advised in fact by independent valuers. That commercial leases are best based on a minimum term of ten years and up to twenty years. And the reason for this is that it provides certainty for the clubs, as you're suggesting, for borrowing and for investment and for infrastructure for the clubs going forward. But again, both of those elements are based on the independent valuation and ultimately it's a decision of council, the terms upon which the lease would be struck.
Councillors, any other questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? Question, councillor Hiddich?
Uh, my question is regarding the lease terms and that I think my understanding was in reading the, the documentation that we were considering, um. Short-term leases of up to five years with extensions, uh, possible. Is that still the model?
There's no specific term mentioned in the draft. It talks about a limited term, but to be negotiated. But taking into account the commercial nature. Both those elements would be informed by the independent valuation. Which takes into account the commercial nature of the business.
Thank you. Councillors, any other questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a mover of an item, a motion? Councillor Fam? Would you like to move the motion? You have a question?
Um, I recently visited the club as well and I, I know that, um. Supporting what councillor Langshie was saying that they need to put. I think million of dollar into investing, in building their facility, including change room and all that. So, um, related to the lease, um, I think it's. Waiting for the, uh, independent, um, validation to come back and have further discussion about it.
So, councillor Fam, what was your question?
So, just, uh, just a comment.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any further questions, councillors, in relation to this item? No? Is there a mover of a motion? Councillor Tacos? Would you like to move the motion, please?
Like to move the motion as per, uh, the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second for this item? Councillor Papafouliou. And would the mover like to speak? Councillor Tacos?
Uh, Madam Mayor, as joint, um, portfolio, uh, holder of Resilient Brimbank, which covers, um, priority advocacy issues. I'm pleased to talk to you about the final draft of the Brimbank Electronic Gambling Policy two thousand and nine. Electronic gambling in Brimbank is an issue I am very concerned about. The aim of the final draft policy is to reduce the social, economic and health harm associated with electronic gambling in Brimbank. The report includes feedback from community consultation on the draft of Electronic Gambling two thousand and eighteen. And presents the final draft electronic gambling policy two thousand and nineteen for consideration. As part of the work undertaken in this area, emerging issues and trends. Research regarding gambling-related harm and impacts to our community were considered. As well as looking at federal and state policy and regulatory, um, changes. We have good data on our local gambling. Consultation tells us that there continues to be diverse views held in the community. From submitters as to the purpose, scope and direction of this draft policy. These can be broadly categorised as either in favour of gambling reform, reformed or opposed to change. Repeated feedback and perspectives include the need to recognise that gambling is illegal activity. And that the positive aspects of gambling need to be balanced also with any risks. The need to understand the extent and limitation of council's role recognising gambling regulation. Is mostly state-based responsibility. In some instances, it is federal. Broad support for actions to increase community understanding of gambling, related harm and support services available. It is clear that council cannot stand by and continue to allow gambling to nega- negatively impact our community. We will, um, thi- this new policy seeks to reduce the social, economic and health harms by working in partnership with the community. With researchers, with the state regulatory bodies, with gambling support services. And with gambling ven- venues themselves, as well as the state and federal government. We will do this by pushing for stronger regulatory reforms at both the state and federal level. Particularly with the rapid, uh, the rapid take-up of online gambling and sports betting. Which is largely unregulated and promoted to young people and targeted to young people in particular. This is a major concern for our council. We recognise that gambling venues do provide some benefits to the community. We recognise that gambling venues do provide some benefits to the community. This policy focuses only on reducing those harms. Finally, it is important that our community is better informed about the risks of gaming, where to get help and where alternatives uh exist. And in indeed, with advocacy, we are working in that space to look at alternatives. And the programme that I mentioned before, where um the state government has funded a programme in three Brimbank schools, uh helping to understand and help kids especially that may be suffering uh from gaming addiction uh at the uh is certainly welcomed and we we want more programmes like that that can help in mitigating those behaviours. I commend this policy to council to lead the way in this critical area that affects our community's health and wellbeing and to help build a strong and resilient community in the future.
Thank you, councillor Tacos. Councillor Papafolio, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I speak for the final draft of the electronic gambling policy and the officer recommendations. I believe council staff have considered all the community feedback appropriately and have made changes as required to provide a slightly more flexible policy. This policy targets the underlying principles of public health, harm minimisation and social justice. The recommended changes to the final policy as written on page fifty-one all aim to reduce the social, economic and harm associated with electronic gambling across Bring Bank, Brimbank. I believe advocacy to state and federal governments is the main key objective for a safer gambling environment and stronger reforms to prevent and reduce harm in Brimbank. I would like to take this opportunity to thank approximately five hundred community members for their vital feedback and the council staff who have worked extremely hard and long hours on this policy. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Papafolio. Councillor Borg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would also like to echo what my fellow councillor said with regards to harm caused by addictive gambling, financially, socially, psychologically and economically. Addictive electronic gambling does not only affect the individual but also members of the family, friends and society at large. Council felt the need to take a leading role in taking action regarding this matter. That is why we have the final draft of the gambling policy to be endorsed at this meeting. Please also to see that council is developing a project involving three local schools who educate children about gambling and the detrimental impacts that it has when it becomes addictive. I would like to acknowledge the contribution of the members of the community during the consultation as well as the intensive work that has been done by Dan and his team. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Councillors, any further comments in relation? Councillor Trum?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um I just would like to act as more from the admirable fellow councillor. Um we all be aware is the gambling is the harm for the community for whole Australia, especially in the Western area. And but we also is know it the gambling, it the legal activity, it approved by the government. We have a lot of project it's support by the federal government and state government about the gambling issue. I am the member of advisory from ethnic community um council Victoria. I hear a lot of story on behalf of all the ethnic community, the the reason why the problem for the community. So we should um I believe it's like we have the drop electronic gambling policy for our council. But we um understand and also educate for the member in community is how it's like um activity for fun or how to uh support them to understand and also provide some of the service for the community. I um for the two block in our land, I really in rich um impressed with the service they provide for the community. I just been to the event from the St Albans uh sport block. Uh on the day they provide a survey to support for the, one of the local member have the cancer. They have the fundraising. And I think that's it to show how the support from the block to the community. And uh it's that's it really great support because I just know it's some of other um block it chat a lot uh when the member in community would like to hide have love for uh um for some of the event. Other um like Bringley block, um I've been there several time and I see uh I show the support they provide for all the sport member come to have uh the meeting or the um come um socially together and the survey they provide for the elderly in the block. So I think it the council should uh look about the the provide and how about the play um we provide for them. Because that is the part for us to support for the community like in the support uh on the sport.
Thank you. Councillor Trum, do you need further time?
Uh I think it one minute.
Yes.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Two-minute time extension, please.
Um. We we all worry um about um the problem from the gambling. So I like I mentioned in the beginning, so with the older block, it's how the other service the activity they can provide, also the support from the sport. And um the main thing is the educate especially for the um cow community uh to understand how the limit of the gambling, how the um the service it been provide and also it's need the counselling if someone and have problem with the gambling. I think that's it the part it the for us to uh support for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Trum. Councillors, any further discussion on this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um look, we um Brimbank was and still is the uh well, I don't know about the heaviest camp of city in the in Victoria, we are, as the books are showing. Uh but it might be in Australian way as well. But look, it's um it it's something that um we can't stop it just for with. It's I think councillor Tacos mentioned early earlier about education. That's the that's the best futuristic type of thing that can happen as we go along with children, students at schools. Um as for the two clubs, the two community clubs, and I'm glad that councillor Dutton mentioned the community uh um uh two community um clubs that we've got, setting up a a fa- a function, a a day out for a person that has terminated cancer, to help the family and everything else. And it it was something that I I said to them at that day, I attended that 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 day and I told them that I'm very proud of them in doing what they actually did. And but like that is um a a a a know and it's happening at all times. They it's a truly community-oriented type of clubs. Um they're getting kids out of the streets and having kids playing sport is the best mitigation, the best ground for any young man or woman to to get into. By taking sport along is is giving them something to grow up to be, if not a a great um sport um champion or champion girl or boy. Uh but at the very end of your lifetime, they become good citizens. And that is proven along all the way through. And all those uh A H D mums and dads and the grandparents to take kids to sport because it's a must for them. And those two clubs are doing that all the time and I commend them. And the report put before us, it gives those two clubs now uh the chance to put a plan before them and try and make it worth doing. And I'm sure they will take care and notice out of this of this decision today and proceed to uh make a plan for the future for the two clubs. Thank you, Mandy.
Thank you, councillor David. Any further discussion on this item? Councillor Headitch.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um I stand uh to speak a bit about um the context that we are considering this policy in tonight and also some of the process and outcome that's come from the consultations going on. Uh as councillor David said earlier, uh we are the biggest losers in Victoria on the E G M's a hundred and forty million dollars uh in the last reported financial year across fifteen venues that are included in the policy at attachment three. Those fifteen venues include two clubs that sit venues on council land. Uh that hundred and forty million uh number one in Victoria also correlates to number one in Victoria for gambling harm levels, the highest in Victoria. The question becomes, what do we as a council do about it for the fifteen venues that cross our city and for the two clubs that have venues on council land? The policy framework is put here before us tonight. The policy is all about reducing gambling harm in Brimbank, uh social, economic and health harm. It's using uh the the policy proposes a public health approach where we take the nutcracker to the gambling harm problem here in Brimbank. We advocate for reform at federal and state level because that's where the approvals and all the delegation around what goes on in this city as far as um uh E G M's goes is is with those levels of government. We advocate to them. But we also are proposing in this uh po- policy that we take local area action ourselves. And with the combination of advocacy to federal and state government and reform at that level and the local area actions that we undertake uh uh from the from the ground up here in Brimbank, that we crack that gambling reform not gradually, slowly over time and in conjunction with our partners and stakeholders. In this case, we have fifteen venues, two of them are clubs on our land who are represented here tonight and are highly interested in where we get to on this one. For me, those clubs have enormous benefits in them. I think any sporting club, as we know it does. Um I talked to St Albans because I know it better than Green Gully. St Albans does a a hell of a lot of really great work in terms of the population and services and the kids in that community who need access to sport, uh whether they be kids who are able or not so able. Uh I think all of us genuinely support all of that benefit that comes. There are jobs, there are all sorts of activities that go on and councillors have spoken about that. The support and respect for that is genuine. But we keep coming back to it and keep I keep saying that the harm, in my view, also needs to be worked on and worked on in partnership. And this policy, it's a a very good policy, I think.
Sorry, councillor Headitch, can we grant a two-minute extension, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a very good policy framework and it allows us to work in partnership with the clubs and the venues, in more particular the venues, a hundred and forty million. The clubs, when you look at the figures in attachment three, uh five point seven and five point three million expenditure collect uh each of them, eleven million dollars of the hundred and forty million dollars collectively. The big ticket issues are with the other venues. These particular clubs, there is harm and there is significant harm, no doubt, that needs to be addressed and they their boards are taking action to deal with some of that, but we need to support them to do more. We're going to negotiate leases. We had a conversation about leases and uh some of the conditions of those leases. It'd be lovely to see the clubs coming forward with discussions about opening hours and various other things that they can do to try and take action now and in the coming years to reduce gambling harm in their communities. I think there's opportunities in there and we look forward to uh the officers doing that negotiation work with the uh with the clubs. The clubs also have a um a commercial lease to uh to uh develop. The clubs uh rightly uh should be able to obtain discounts if there are benefits that they're accruing to community. That's a perfectly valid thing. I think we also have to remember that the the clubs are profitable and that they do have significant profits that go back into community but also back into other things and that needs to be considered as well. So a fair commercial rent needs to be um struck, for a commercial lease needs to be struck. Um I think the matter of legality, it is a legal business, but there is increasingly in this community and through the Banking Royal Commission and various others, uh companies, boards are being asked to have a look at their social licence to operate. We need to have a broader conversation about that sort of thing within community and to have forums and conversations with clubs and others about that. Uh for me, the impacts, the positive impacts of jobs, sport and rec opportunities, uh meals, entertainment, uh so on are all all there for us to see with the clubs. But I think also the impacts of broken families, of um financial difficulties, of kids going to school without breakfast, of homelessness and so on.
Thank you, councillor Headitch. You've said it's your time and there's no further extensions available.
Thank you.
Councillors, are there any uh further comments or anyone wishing to speak? Councillor Langishy?
Uh through you, Madam Mayor. Um uh this support has been worked over for quite a while uh and has evolved as part particularly um uh through the work of the officers, councillors and the community submissions that have been received, which have been substantial and have been given some regard. Uh of course, gambling is very much a a state issue, state legislation a- and the vast bulk of this policy is aimed at uh advocating uh at the state level to improve um the way the gambling industry operates and to minimise harm um through various techniques of hours of operation and other things. And and that's to be strongly supported. That there are substantial differences, uh and I've known people who have worked in the pubs and the clubs. A- and in discussing with them, there's a very big difference between um the harm minimisation that's been taken by the clubs, the work that's been done by the clubs. Um a- and the figures we see in this report uh reflect that there's quite a difference even in dollars per machine and dollars of income uh for the clubs and the pubs, generally speaking. So again, this policy really is aimed at dealing with the harm minimisation issues, um advocating to the state government and we hope all councils across Victoria um develop policies like this and lobby on those particular issues. Uh in terms of the uh the two clubs that operate um uh on council land, their percentage impact on this is less than ten percent. I I feel that uh um they're a smaller, very much a small percentage of it and as against the pubs um which do employ uh do provide employment. These clubs do um enormous amount of work for our community, particularly the um i- if I could mention the two clubs um that operate on council land. They will now be paying a a commercial rate with appropriate discounts um for uh minimising social harm and things like that. Um but what they do for our children, our sportsmen and women, our sports children um in promoting uh uh soccer and and sporting activities, the amounts they donate to other groups and the volunteer work involved and the mums and dads that are all involved in this is absolutely fantastic and to be strongly supported. And that's to be taken as quite different to this to the harm that is done by the state level. So I see some very strong differences there. And I do rethi- I do think this carefully approached policy and the way it will evolve uh will particularly address the big picture issue of concerns while minimising um uh the uh the impact on our own clubs. So I am satisfied with it and I will support it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Langishy. Councillor, any further comments on this item? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Just wait for councillor Juditary to come back into the room. And I know there is a number of member of the ga- members of the gallery here in relation to this item, so you are welcome to leave, should you wish, or happy to hang around and watch the remainder of the council meeting. Okay, councillors, we are now moving on to item twelve point twelve. Hampshire Road Master Plan two thousand and fourteen implementation, May two thousand and nineteen update. And uh Mister Whiteside, would you please introduce the report?
Uh thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report uh is to present an update uh to council on the implementation of the Hampshire Road Master Plan two thousand and fourteen and to note the progress of stages one, two, three and four. Uh the report recommends that council notes the May two thousand and one update on the implementation of the master plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Whiteside. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a motion, councillors? Councillor Allen? Seconded. Sorry, could you? Sorry, please move it.
That's printed in the business papers.
Thank you. Councillor Pham, seconding. Councillor Allen, would you like to speak to the motion? No. Councillor Pham, would you like to speak to the motion? No. Councillor Pham, would you like to speak to the motion? No. Is there any other comments in relation to this motion, councillor Headitch?
Tragic report. Um much needed work, Hampshire Road, uh there's a lot to come and there is, um I I see uh we have. Some deferments going on until after the uh the festival at uh in January, January, yep. Hmm? The uh Lantern Festival. Also, I got my date wrong. There's been a deferment um. With the works commenced nearly two thousand and twenty to avoid impacting with the Sunshine Lantern Festival and the busy December trading period. So, welcome that. Um I think the ongoing refresh and building of um this particular uh street, Hampshire Road. Main street uh is vitally important to the um presentation of sunshine to all those investors who are going to come. And uh consider putting their hard earned into this particular area. As we go forward with some of the big ma- major infrastructure investments that are going on. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Headitch. Councillors, any further comments in relation to this option? Councillor Trum?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um I think it's the the master plan is really uh. Important for the council and for the local people. But I have the feedback from the business in Hampshire Road, they just really be um. They are worried because when you do the upright of master plan, so you have to close some of the park. And they say just will be affect from uh to their business. So they would like to know is the. How long will be and anything can help to encourage their business?
I- is that a question in relation to the report or perhaps something that we can take on notice? And deal with outside of the council meeting, Mister Whiteside?
Uh I either way, Madam.
Okay, I think we'll deal with that outside of the council meeting. Thank you. Councillors, any first further comments in relation to the report? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you. Okay, we're now moving on to item twelve point one three, which is options to investigate alleged illegal brothels in Brimbank. And councillors, I would like to participate in the debate on this item, so is there a procedural motion from. Me to vacate the chair and for councillor David to take over. Uh councillor Tacos? Thank you, seconded. Councillor Papafoude, all those in favour? Carried. Thank you. Councillor David?
Thank you for that, twelve point three. Um.
Twelve point three.
Yeah, invite. Perhaps briefly, um introduce the report. Uh, thank you, Kristin, thank you.
Thank you. At the ordinary council meeting on the nineteenth of February this year, council resolved to receive a report detailing options. Including associated benefits, risks and costs to council to respond to the challenge of alleged illegal brothels in Brimbank. The purpose of this report is for council to consider these options.
Thank you. Any other questions, councillor, on this issue? No? Mayor?
Thank you, councillor David. I would like to move an amended motion, please, or actually it's an alternate motion to the officer's recommendation. Um and that is that council notes the option available to council to investigate illegal brothels. In Brimbank as outlined in attachment one. Um but the alternate is that we endorse option two, contained in options paper at attachment one to engage independent investigators to investigate. Alleged illegal brothels in Brimbank with the intent to close down illegal operations in conjunction with Victoria Police. And C refers an additional cost, initial cost of thirty six thousand dollars to this two thousand and nineteen twenty budget process. For consideration and the remainder of the motion is as per the officer's recommendation.
I have a second please for this, councillor Headitch. Would you like to speak, Madam?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Yeah.
So councillors, um you recall that back on the nineteenth of February, I raised a notice of motion requesting a council receive a report. Detailing options, including associated benefits, risks and costs for council to respond. To the challenge of alleged illegal brothels operating in this municipality. And if I think, if I can, I just wanted to take a moment to take a step back and to understand why I raised that notice of motion and um. Why it was brought to council in the first place. So the reason I raised that notice of motion was a response from many community members regarding their concern for the amount of alleged illegal brothels. That are op- operating within this municipality. It has been an ongoing conversation with us since we were elected. And concern from members of the public. Some of the primary concerns were the number, so over fourteen that I know of allegedly are operating. The location, many of them are across the road from schools, they're in main streets, they're in local um park, you know, across the road from local parks. Um some of them are in residential homes, so people are living next door to them. And there are some operating next door to businesses and I have one in particular. That I think I mentioned last time when I raised this is operating next door to a professional business with a plaster wall in between. And the noise disturbance to that business and the health and safety of the workers within that business is being impacted. We were also concerned about the number of other things that might be happening within these massage parlors, as many of them are are fronts. Um including people being asked to do um sex acts that they're not comfortable with, trafficking of of sex workers. Drugs, other other illegal activities, money laundering, et cetera. The other reason that I raised this was that we had evidence from other councils, including Kingston Council, that they had managed by. Employing independent o- um investigators, they'd managed to close down fourteen illegal brothels. Now, my understanding is since my time in council, we've closed one. There's been many, many complaints, but we've managed to close one, which is where Sadie Black is now, in Albion. So I want to thank all the the officers for all the work that they've put into this report and for their original recommendation and I understand why the recommendation was. That we maintain the status quo. But I don't agree with it. And the reason I don't agree with it is if we maintain the status quo, we maintain the results we're getting now. And in my book and the book of many of the residents that I talk to, we're just not getting the cut through that we need to tackle this issue. Our police, although they want to investigate and they want to close these places down, they have to jump through a number of hoots, they have. Um hoops, sorry, they have different laws, we can close that, um we can close premises down under the planning reform. They have to, they have to crim- criminally prosecute, so it's a different kettle of fish. So they're not getting the results. The community have nowhere to turn. They look to us to help them. There's a cost here that's been investiga- that's been proposed of thirty six thousand dollars. That's an estimated annual cost of addressing many illegal brothels. We're talking about four thousand dollars a pop to hire an investigator, plus the administrative work around that. In my view, if we manage to close down or investigate several brothels. And close them down or move them on and a cost of thirty six thousand dollars, it would be money well spent. And I think that I echo the the voice of many community members when I say that. So that is my humble opinion and that's my view as a council and I ask my fellow councillors to support this mo- motion. And to support the wider community in addressing this very, very serious concern for them. Um and I commend this report to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh councillor Headitch, would you like to speak?
Briefly, I support all of the mayor's said. Uh I think there's a a need to uh take an alternative tack with this and that uh. The uh amended motion does that and I do commend the officers for their work. Uh we've got got the options, we've got the costs. Um we've got to make the decision now. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Headitch. Any other comments, councillors? Postions, if you like, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, um thank you. Um. I support everything you said. Um my only question is in terms of the disadvantages that was mentioned. About how the, uh what was it? I lost it. S C, the S C I C. Um was referring more people to council, which placed a greater burden on council, which then raised costs. Um we, what will be done in that space to make sure that we're not just taking it all on ourself? And that we're working with the Victorian police, because although I I I see that, you know, option D mentions that we write to them, but. Um just wondering what we would do in that scenario where we get a a greater burden.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin, thank you.
It would be our intention to work closely with the police so that um we would not like to see a large number of referrals back from the police. Um and then basically washing their hands of it, which I don't imagine would happen. Um they are very cooperative in our um in our discussions with them. Um so I think it would be a matter of working with the police and working through um the issues involved in each one. And trying to uh work together to, so that we're not basically pushing back and forward between each other.
Thank you. Any other comments, councillor, uh to the chair, please?
Thank you, um Mister Deputy Mayor. Um whilst I agree with all the comments around the room, I do have an issue with this, um. We are not law and order. This issue is supposed to be law and order. And whilst we would be hiring private investigators, um the money that we would be spending on the private investigators, that even still has to be handed over to the police anyway. So I'm not quite sure how ha- hiring private investigators would actually help this cause. Because the police still at the end of the day have to do what they have to do. And whilst we have plows, powers under the Planning and Environment Act. I'm not quite sure, do the police have evidence over these things? Why aren't they closing them down if they're illegal? There's a lot of questions there in my mind. The other question that I also have is referring it to the budget. Now, our draft budget is actually out for consultation. Um I'm not quite sure how the public would actually be looking at this, thinking, well. If they can refer thirty six thousand dollars to the budget for this, then we can refer thirty six thousand dollars to the budget for something else. Or a hundred thousand dollars for something else. And I'm sure um that there would be some questions around it. I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, but I cannot support this as it is. I would revert back to the original uh recommendation if this does not. Um go through. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Juditary. Um.
Deputy Mayor, question for the officers, please. Um. Miss Gilbert, under the um the work of Kingston City Council, I understand that under their planning scheme. The police are not required to be involved to close down a venue. Is that correct?
My understanding is Kingston aren't necessarily using the planning scheme, but they're using the Sex Work Act. Um and prescribing premises, which means that the premises premises um can then not be used for a period of time. Sometimes three months, sometimes up to twelve months. So nobody can enter or leave that premises at all during that time or it's an offence.
Yes.
So they're prosecuting it under the Sex Work Act as opposed to the Planning and Environment Act.
Correct. So the police do not need to be involved in the investigation in the event a private investigator. Finds illegal activity happening on that side. Correct. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Uh councillor, it's an issue that's been before us for quite a while. This is very important to all of us. Uh any comments, any other questions perhaps, before I put it to the vote? Councillor Papafoude, here?
I'm going to be brief. I concur with the mayor. As councillors, we're representing the community and we must do something. We've got residents that come to us and have complained about these brothels again and again over the last two and a half years. The police are well aware of it. We need to work with the police, but we need to do a bit more as well as a council. So I will support um the amendment um that the mayors made. Thank you.
Comments, councillor Langashir, thank you.
Through you, Madam Mayor, the um.
This is um Mr. Here.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um some time ago, uh as a uh director of planning and development to the council. Um I won't name the council. Um we had a brothel diagonally opposite the members' member of parliament's office. And uh uh it was operating for some time when we, by the time we found out about it. And we found out about it because a lady had overdosed and died in the facility because obviously there was.
Hmm.
Not just uh um prostitution occurring, but very much um drug dealing occurring. And it was quite disturbing when we found out. Um the fact back then, as seems to be now. The police have real difficulties in dealing with these issues is um disappointing. Um we took the matter on, but we were also mindful back then. Um that some other councils had tried to do the same and had ended up in the courts. Um uh to which their costs were spiralling upwards of half a million um in those sort of things. Um because some of these businesses are very much profitable and are able to just fight you endlessly in the courts. So not to be taken on lightly. Um we we did use a private investigator. Um as part of our process and there's clearly a cost involved with that. Um the planning process um or or other acts that might um be available to us. Are quite good, but again, I I just issue some caution that as a public authority. Um using private investigators uh in this area um was not taken likely by us. To say, in the council I worked in at the time, um uh because of what was actually collecting evidence was. Was awkward. Um uh the risk of running over in costs um as we go through processes. And getting tangled into court processes is an issue. Um what ultimately closed that particular place down was. Uh a quite a simple technique, actually. We we found out the owners of the premises. And told them quite clearly that if they didn't close it down, we were going to expose them. Um and it closed down. So we need to make sure we explore all options on how to deal with these premises. A- and be quite um uh uh forthright in how we go about these things before we in. Uh bog ourselves down into a into a process that could be more difficult.
It's okay. Thank you. It's all, it's all safe. No. Thank you, councillor Langashir. Any other com- comments, councillors? No? None to conclude? Thank you.
Thank you, uh Deputy Mayor. So just to um to sum up, I was just having a look through. The um advantages and disadvantages of the proposed recommendation. Um and I just wanted to highlight again that. The cost of using investigators, which is between three thou- three thousand and four thousand dollars per investigation, um. Generally provides enough evidence to prove beyond reasonable doubt that there is something going on in the in the facility. And in most instances, on the experiences of the other councils that have done it, the cost of the investigator. And legal representation are awarded to council when it is successfully prosecuted. So there is a chance that the money we are outlaying comes back. Um. We do not need the police to be involved. As as councillor Juditary suggested before, that is not correct. We do not need the police to be involved to. Execute the matter under our own powers, under the planning scheme. It does not police, preclude police being involved, who as Miss Gilbert suggested, if we find something and we prosecute or we find that there's something going on there. We close the premises down for three months, the police can then become involved. So that if they choose to open again, the police can intervene at that stage. I think the other point to highlight is that I I would suggest that most of the people that are operating these venues don't own the premises, but are in fact renting them out. And that once the owner finds out that what's going on in that business, I doubt very much that the owners would allow that business to re-operate on under their premises. I certainly wouldn't if I owned that particular building. Um. In summing up again, I ask the council to consider this. Um I know that we are in draft budget stage, but that is exactly that. It is draft budget for us to be able to make changes before it is finalised and adopted by council. There is still time. We are talking about a very small amount of money in the grand scheme of things, a two hundred and eighty million dollar budget. Thirty six thousand dollars to deal with this issue, which is a bugbear for many, many people in our community. We have a, we have a um responsibility to our residents.
Uh is there a possibility of accession?
No extension. Thank you. Commender report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillors, uh put this report to the vote, please. All those in favour? Got it. Thank you.
Division, thank you. Division? Thank you. Division.
Division? The mayor asks for a division, councillors. All those in favour? And myself? All those against, please?
Sorry.
Uh I've got, sorry, I've got to name you, yes. Thank you, I can name me. All those in favour again? Councillor Palm, councillor Langashire, the mayor, councillor Trum, councillor Headish. Councillor Allen, councillor Targus, councillor Bourke and councillor Papafoudeou. All those against? Councillor Judich, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councillors. We are now on item twelve point fourteen, which is the proposed sale of land. At twenty four Beckett Avenue, Keeler East. So councillors are there, oh sorry, I'll I'll go over to Mister Whiteside to introduce the report.
Uh thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is for council to consider a proposal to sell land, considered surplus to council requirements. At twenty four Beckett Avenue, Keeler East. Uh the report recommendation details a number of requirements. Uh including a proposal to establish a hearing of submission committee, which would require the nomination of councillors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Whiteside. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a mover? Is there a motion? Councillor Papafoudeou?
As printed in the papers, and could I also add for B number four? Um we appoint myself as the chair, councillor Tarkos. And councillor David as members of the hearing submissions committee. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Papafoudeou. Seconded by councillor David. Uh would the mover like to speak to the motion? No? Would the second like to speak to this motion? No? Is there any discussion on this item, councillors? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. All those against? Ca- okay, carried. Um and we will move on to item number twelve point fifteen. Which is contract number nineteen slash two five two zero pavement marking services. Again, Mister Whiteside, would you please introduce this report?
Uh thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is for council to consider awarding contract nineteen two five two zero pavement marking services. For a period of four years to Citywide Service Solutions, uh who were evaluated by the tender valuation panel as the preferred tenderer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Whiteside. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a motion? Councillor David? Thank you. Is there a second for that? Councillor Allen? Any discussion on this item? Councillor David? No. Councillor Allen? No. Councillors? No discussion? Okay, we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we are now on to item number thirteen, which is notices of motion, and there are no notices of motion this evening. Item number fourteen is rescission motions and there are no rescission motions this evening. Item number fifteen is urgent business. Madam C E O, is there any urgent business this evening? No urgent business? Okay, we're now moving on to item number sixteen and there are two items of confidential business listed in tonight's agenda. So may I have a mover of a motion to close the meeting to members of the public for consideration of items sixteen point one and sixteen point two. Which have been designated as confidential. Councillor Papafoudeou moved seconded to councillor Judich. I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, so the meeting is now closed to members of the public at nine fifty four P M. I'd like to thank everybody for attending the meeting today and thank you for your interest in tonight's proceedings. And I now declare this meeting closed at ten twenty four P M. Thank you.